Thank you, Mrs. Natale. Of course, Captain, we have some breaking news that we'll cover here as part of our health and safety plan with the order from the Erie County Executive. Before we get to that, let's jump into a quick construction update from Mr. Piddick. John?
Yes. At the high school, they've completed drilling all those pilings that you showed us last week, the 311, to build the foundation on top of. Those are done, so they're starting the foundation. The cafeteria is being painted, the ceiling grid is in place, about 50% of it, they'll finish that this week. Still, if you were in there today, you didn't think, you didn't want to think there'd be a way we could have school ready next week, but there'll be no problems. At the elementary school, they're finishing the underground work this week, and they're going to start building the blocks, everything above the ground. So they're ahead of schedule, well ahead of schedule. At the elementary, at the high school, the temporary classrooms that we talked about, those are, those are all built, all the new, all the furniture has been moved in place. So those five teachers that were displaced, they're ready to go, they're just finishing the final touches on their room to get them ready for the year. Kind of like everyone, all the other teachers, so they're about at the same spot. That's going well. Any questions on anything?
I have a question for you, but maybe for, oh, not sure where we're at. So for the athletic, last year we had the three new cameras set up, or do we still have that subscription available for the school?
Yeah, so the pixel lot that's in our gymnasium and in our stadium, that is still up and running, and that is available. So anyone, whether it's a Fairview family or an outside family, they can purchase a subscription if they would like, or any subscriptions that were purchased last year may still extend into this year.
And that still just automatically starts going?
Correct, yeah, so Mrs. Frisco puts in all of our athletic events, and so there'll be events on that, on that system, and then you can watch, hang out. And it also transfers to, if you get a subscription, any location that has a pixel lot, you know, like Harbor Creek or Fort LeBeuf, and some other schools are starting to install them, even though it's at their, at their location, you can still see it. Yeah, yeah.
We should get something on School G to put out a fact as well.
Yeah, and Mrs. Frisco is going to release, she has stuff ready to release out on School G and social media, you know, as things get closer. So we, with the help of John and his group getting creative and finding some spots, just today, we were able to let every student who applied for a parking pass on time, they are able to get a parking pass. So they would, they got an email today, and they can pick it up anytime this week. Now, there's no guarantees on anyone who did not meet the deadline, they will have parking passes because we have assigned every single spot in that parking lot to both staff and students, but as of right now, we can accommodate that.
And there were students there early today picking them up.
Oh, yeah, after Emory sent the email out, I think we had a couple within five minutes. So, yeah, Autumn may have been one of them. They wanted, they wanted to get that.
I could have picked something mosey in.
Yeah, parking pass, they're there.
Anything else for construction, John?
We're anxiously awaiting the start of school. A lot of the inside work will definitely be toned down, the contractors will be working outside mostly, so it'll be a little bit less distractions.
Okay, we'll jump into health and safety plan. As you know, this afternoon, I have a copy over here, the Erie County Department of Health and the county executive Kathy Dahl-Ember put out an order for all of Erie County publics to public and private schools, KDA, KDA Columbus Division, where masks are mandatory until further notice. So farther down here, it talks about what face coverings are, the fact that face coverings will be required when within an enclosed area of a public or private preschool, primary or secondary school, and that includes employees, students, visitors, and contractors. That's information that we have to share with all of our contractors, starting, it actually will affect this afternoon, 3:00 p.m. There are some exceptions to the face covering requirement here for folks with disabilities, folks that can't wear masks without assistance, and for children under the age of two. Of course, that doesn't affect us, but I know when I had a conversation with Mrs. Dahl-Ember, she told me that this order is going to likely stay into effect until we're out of substantial. So in other words, until we reach back down to moderate. We're high right now, so we're above substantial. I don't know, I don't know when that will be, probably not in the foreseeable future, though, based on where we're trending in the county. With that said, I know that there was, after the last board meeting, there was significant interest in several board members who contacted me individually to relook at the health and safety plan this evening, so it is an agenda item tonight. I asked some local physicians, at the request of some board members, some local physicians to chime in on their take on face covering in school. I will tell you that I've had three responses, and two of them are here, another of these two folks could make it this evening. But this is a response from Dr. Allison Mallard, and she gives a long response about COVID, her concerns about the variants, and talking about CDC recommendations and guidelines, and her recommendation is for universal masking regardless of transmission rates in the county. And that's in your board material for your center office, or correspondent. On that state document is a response from Emily Shears, who's a local epidemiologist, and she also shares her insight on masking. And to quote her, out there, she believes masking is a very effective tool that can prevent, help prevent spread of all respiratory illnesses, including strains and variants of COVID. And the last sentence there in her summary, she says, "I support universal masking for children going back to school," and she gives eight reasons why she supports universal masking. I did as a follow-up assessment this year, if that meant in high or moderate, or high, and she indicated that she supports universal masking also at any level of transmission in the county, because of the goods and practice for students. The third physician that I asked for some feedback on is Dr. Fox. Dr. Fox is a proud parent of a couple of retired graduates, and he was actually able to make it tonight, so, Dr. Fox, I'm going to turn things over to you for a couple of comments.
Ryan, you got my 130 slide on the point. So thank you for inviting me tonight. I put together a little more practical stuff, I knew that, you know, y'all know the CDC recommendations, y'all know the county executive has already put down a mandate, let's leave it at that. But I want to talk a little bit more practical, I want to talk about a different level than just what the CDC says and what the mandate says. I want to really talk about what practicality, I want to take it to the ground, and let you kind of visualize why masking, by the way, I'm for ease of masking, irrespective of the level of infection in the county, and I'll tell you why for several reasons. So first off, looking at the numbers and looking at the levels. The initial plan was to mask mandate when the levels were high, and not mask mandate when the substantial levels were low. Well, the issue with that is three parts. One, the numbers lag about a week behind, so you're waiting until it's already surged before you tell people to mask. And then, yes, you're waiting a week before you take them off after it's gone back down, but the numbers lag, so you're actually in the peak of the infectious period before you put masks on. The second part of it is, even if we go to daily updates again, which we may do, it's going to be like snow days. Kids are going to wake up every morning and wait to look on the TV, does he have to go to school and not wear a mask? It's going to be very impractical to actually make it work, because every day you're going to have to say, "Did you read your email? Did you read your text? Did you see the thing scrolling along the bottom of the TV?" It's not a practical way to make it work, because the numbers lag, and even if we go to daily, which would be a one-day lag, you're going to be putting the kids at risk, because kids are going to remember to look for things, that if someone did watch TV, they're going to text them, email them, go to school. Next, and I'm going to give you some real world stuff, okay? In Florida, they have mask options, parents can opt in or opt out, depending. Two counties, over the first week, have such substantial numbers, they backed the county, drop it over to me if you want to see it, but it's a much larger county, so relatively speaking, it may or may not be relative. But after one week of school, they already backed off because they found that the numbers surged because of the way school is set up, okay? So they backed off and went to game tourney asking. The interesting piece of these things is that when you look at mandatory masking, it makes everyone out of the people around, okay? I have friends who have their kids in school in other states where school has already started, and they're at levels where our vaccinations right now, here, are about 50%. They're in states where vaccination levels are a little lower than 50%, and the virus is running a little more ramp. Their schools are not mandating masks, but they ask their children to wear masks in school. What do you think happened to the kids wearing masks in school where masks are not mandated? You guys push it, cannot have bullying. There is a lot of bullying going on in the schools where masks are not mandated and children are being told by their parents to wear masks. So what happens? Either the kid doesn't wear a mask, they're out of bullying, and puts themselves at risk, or you flip it the other side, and the kid wears the mask and is subjected to ridicule, harassment, et cetera, by the kids that are not wearing masks, even their parents and children are not putting it in. So I've been looking at, right now, lagging numbers, making it impractical because you have to literally notify kids day to day or week to week whether they're wearing masks. I'm looking at the number surges in Florida, I'm looking at bullying. Oh, there's more, of course, there's more. I think someone had eight points, I'm going to probably get close to eight points. I believe this school system, at least I remember when my kids were in school, had a policy that you can't have nuts and snacks because someone might have a peanut allergy somewhere in the building, so you're protecting an individual from something that may or may not be around them, because you don't want someone to die of the virus. How does that not relate to universal masking? You're protecting somebody, especially a 10-year-old, a nine-year-old, an eight-year-old, from someone else who may or may not be able to give them a deadly virus. So peanuts are okay to mandate, let's not have them around, but masks are not okay to mandate because somehow it's on a different level. So you're already mandating health and safety for kids, right? You just don't even realize you're doing it. Manding a mask is not controversial from that level. I had a letter from a parent last week asking me to write a letter to the school district saying that her son, who is seven, does not need to wear a mask because he has speech impediment, and the mask makes his speech impediment worse. Her five-year-old daughter, who's just starting school, also is very shy and feels that the mask is going to make her less likely to interact with other people in school. She wanted me to write a letter giving her an exemption for wearing masks for that. My response, and I will give you two sides of my response, because I wrote one response, and then I answered another way that didn't go to the parent. My response is, I need to protect your kids, and your kids hate the masks because they're the ones who are likely to develop the virus right now, because the virus is looking to the little kids who aren't vaccinated. Also, from a safety standpoint, you need to think about everybody, and by the way, if your child's shy or has a speech impediment, not masking versus masking is going to put them in a place where they're even more difficult to be around them in contemporary masking your school district. That's kind of what I told her. What I didn't tell her was, you aren't vaccinated, your husband isn't vaccinated, you hang around with 100 people who aren't vaccinated, and I know them. So your kids are the ones who are going to give it to everyone else in the school district, because they're the ones who are likely to be carrying the virus even if they don't feel infected. So when you look at the people around you, who is going to choose not to mask? The parents who aren't vaccinated? Well, if you look at the data, the people who don't mask voluntarily are often the ones who also don't mask voluntarily. So you're looking at subjecting your school district to a higher-risk kid, who then is a higher-risk carrier, who then could pass it on to the rest of the community, and the community spread just blows. And it just explodes, and that's what's happening in several districts in Florida. So I put that all together, and at the end of the day, I said, you know what? It makes perfect sense to universally mask irrespective of the level of infection in the community, or the level of spread of the community right now. And to be leaders in the community is to show that, to take the tough decisions, and make it work for your kids, and make it work for the system. It should be mandatory for the kids, it should be mandatory for the teachers, it should be mandatory for the custodial staff, or the laundry people, and the volunteers. Because eventually, what you guys really want to promulgate is excellence in safety, along with athletics, arts, and academics. So that's my presentation, if you have questions, I'm happy to answer, and I got some real numbers with me, I just didn't take them quite necessarily.
So, Dr. Fox, your final recommendation is regardless of transmission rate in the county, as long as COVID is allowed as well in Erie County, to some extent, whether it be low water, substantial, or high, that all the people in the building should remain masked at all times.
Unless you get 100% vaccination in the school system?
Yeah.
If you get 100% vaccination in the district, or even if you got 95% vaccination in the district, I would be willing to juggle my vote. But if you got 50 to 60?
Can I add this?
Yes.
Wait, would you mind sharing with us?
Sure. First, I will tell you that in Florida, just for real numbers there, in the Palm Beach County, they had a parental opt-out that allowed more than 10,000 children to attend classes without masks, which is about 10% of the students. The board reversed course after the number in one week, with 734 students, 112 employees had confirmed infections, and 1,700 students were quarantined one week. If you go over a few miles to Hillsborough County, in Hillsborough, there are numbers, total of 2,058 confirmed cases of COVID-19, 10,000 students went into isolation after four days. So when you look at those numbers right there, yes, it's a grander scale than here, but you're looking at 10 to 12 percent. Now, if you also look at the contagiousness of the Delta variant versus the original COVID-19, let me correct. Right now, if you look at the numbers from a year ago, per million, about 4,060 people were hospitalized per million with COVID-19. And of those, roughly 1,086 would die. Now, with the Delta variant, it's just under 5,000, 20,000 people change hospitalized per million, and it's just under 2,000 people per million infected that died. The bad part of it is, is when you look at the split, if you look at the original split, you're looking at about 70% 50-year-olds, and of that 70%, about 80% of 65-year-olds that were in hospitals and dying. Now, it's about 40% over 50, and 60% under 50, including teens and youth. And Erie County, we're lucky, right now, we have no Peds in the hospital, we have no Peds on the bench, we have no Peds that are suffering. We're lucky, that's not happening, oh, one more piece of data I wanted to tell you. Cleveland is in complete shutdown right now. If you look at the trends a year and a half ago, we trended about three to four weeks behind Cleveland, and our numbers go with the trade winds. If you watch our weather, if you look at the Cleveland Indians' ballgame, and it's raining in Cleveland, it's raining here two and a half, three hours later. The same thing actually happened with the virus a year and a half ago. If you look at Cleveland's numbers and their percent infected, it shifted over here two to three weeks later. So we're looking at just hitting high today, actually yesterday, but Cleveland is shut down because they're substantially higher than they were three weeks ago. If you look at the week of September 7th, we're going to be looking at probably those kind of numbers. That's real numbers, okay? Is that helpful, woman?
Thank you.
You're welcome. Yes?
The FDA approval of Pfizer vaccine today or yesterday?
It was last night at 5:00 o'clock.
Okay. Do you have any insight as to when the vaccine might be available for children under 12?
We're doing studies in Erie right now, actually, and if you, I believe the studies are still open, so if you have a kid under 12, it may be interesting, contact my office, I may be able to get you the study. The data that Pfizer's collecting, they started collecting it back in April, they're looking at trying to collect four to six months of data, so you're hitting that critical point right now where they're going to get ready to submit it to the FDA. So I would say, and this is just a little inside information, you're going to probably have to get another six weeks before you see it available to the FDA for approval, and then urgency use is after that. So we're in October, we'd be the outside place where, right now, it's looking, the numbers look great, okay? So the numbers are good, down to the age of five, so five to 12, five to 11, look really good. Safety numbers are fantastic, and the FFC numbers are fantastic. It's getting to that critical number of people, of vaccine lives, so to speak, or life years, that will get that going. So do I have insight? I do have a little bit of insight, but I can't tell you, you know, I don't have that crystal ball to tell you for sure. If I was a betting man, I'd be putting out numbers.
Is that, if there was an emergency?
There'll be emergencies for that age, yeah, because it's only, it's an add-on. So it's being approved fully for adults. If you look at it closely, they're extending masks to the 12 to the 17 age group, but it was originally, it's approved for adults, extension too. The new one, because it'll be an add-on, will have to be an emergency use initially. It's all about timing, so that gives you room. Was that helpful?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Fox.
Thank you.
Mr. Natale, we had two folks also, Abby Thomas, our coordinator, is here, to give some additional information on our health and safety plan in terms of quarantine and isolation, but we had two additional folks who wanted to speak to this topic, if this is appropriate time. Normally, we would take public comment on agenda items during public meetings, all of the committee, the whole meeting, but we will take the speakers now for their sake and for the sake of the discussion, all of the health and safety. So we had previously announced speaker Brittany Taylor, is Brittany Taylor here? Okay, Brittany, thank you for coming by policy of the board, and you have five minutes, as we were preannounced to speak, so let me know when you're ready to start. And then after one minute, I'll put my finger up your head, okay?
I'm old, so I apologize if I'm shivering.
Just trying to speak real loudly, because we're, you're interested in that.
Got it. All right, I'm ready.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening, I'm Brittany Taylor, and I have incoming second and first graders. I personally would prefer not to be here, however, based on the vote at the last board meeting on representation of the audience, I thought it was important for you to know that there's a large group of parents that are for a masking requirement at an earlier phase in the board approved. Although they all had different reasons as to why they would support the masking requirement, the one that was consistent across the group set was that their priority is for all kids to be in the classroom safely all year with the least amount of disruption. And they all agreed that requiring masking for everyone would be necessary to do that. With the current situation, if masking is optional, and I require my child to wear a mask, but the parents of the child next door choose for them to not mask, but the parents and the child test positive, my child and any other child that was masked that came in contact with me were required to quarantine. Versus, if all children were required to mask, then only the child that tests positive is required to quarantine. The parents I spoke to that were not, that were not in agreement on their thoughts on masking in general, all were concerned with their choice impacting other children and families, along with their child having to quarantine due to another family's choice. We must remember that we have an entire second grade class that is going into their third year of elementary school and have yet to have a full in-classroom experience. Family's stress levels for the last year and a half are at an all-time high, with the main contributing factor being the stress of unpredictability of the school schedule and balancing homeschooling and work. Some families had to make decisions they were not comfortable with because they had to physically go to their work. They did not have the option of having a parent stay home whether working or not. We're now asking families to face again, is to have another year of possible quarantines for their children if their child is unfortunate enough to be seeded by or come in contact with an unmasked child that gets the virus, or worse. Another shutdown because we didn't implement the mitigation techniques we used in the last quarter of last year until it was too late. Again, some families do not have a parent that can stay home, and they may not hopefully provide them to be in financially harmful. Not to mention that these children lose academic time due to somebody else's choice. For those of you who are against mandating masks, are you going to volunteer to take care of the children that are forced to quarantine due to optional masking? The date of year 2021 is etched into my brain forever. It was the day our children went to their first school, in-person day of school since March of 2020. I'm sure I'm not alone in my experience that over that last quarter, I saw my children grow rapidly from an academic standpoint, and emotional and social well-being standpoint, and then their independence. I heard them finally have stories of other kids in their class that they were now able to interact with in person, that they had more time to have regular school experiences. They did not complain about wearing masks the whole day, nor did they complain about spacing for lunch. And they actually liked to tell us which area that had the gym for recess that day. We did not get the flu this past school year, which, by the way, for some of you who forgot, this school got crushed for the elementary school in winter of 2020. We did not get the stomach virus, nor did my family get any other type of virus or illness. We have a perfect example of the mitigation techniques used working last year. At that point, the cases were lower than what they are now, and there's now another variant that we still don't have all the information on. That means we are running a higher risk of a shutdown, and we're definitely at a higher risk of a shut, or of kids getting the virus and causing other children to quarantine. The administration themselves said the kids did beautifully in following all the requirements and guidelines last year, so why wouldn't we expect the same this year? The school board's priority should be to keep all kids in-person learning safely all year with the least amount of disruption. That being said, I don't know why we would consider anything less than the procedures we followed last spring in masking and lunch setup. If you have a small kitchen fire, you would take the steps to put it off right away. You wouldn't wait until your whole house is on fire to start cleaning it out. And if you would wait, then please make sure you aren't my neighbor, so your fire doesn't spread to my house. Thank you.
Thank you, Brittany. Next speaker, Alana, Dr. Sarra. Say that correctly?
Yes.
Oh, great. Dr. Sarra, you were also with Mrs. Dahl-Ember last week, right, for the press conference?
Yes, I, yeah. And I was going to just finish my, I don't know how many hours shoot, and I invited the child to the children's hospital today. So it was really a big day for me, but I still find, I found it very important for me to be here today, just to share my knowledge and share the guidelines from American Academy of Pediatrics. Okay?
What is it?
Yes, my name is Dr. Sutlana, and one of the pediatricians of UBC in Patient U. Okay? So I'm taking care of a secret patient in the town, and as well, I'm a fellow of American Academy of Pediatrics. So American Academy of Pediatrics strongly recommends universal masking regardless of vaccination types. And as well, obviously, we discussed about promotion of vaccination for those who are eligible. So I think everybody would agree that remote learning really kind of highlighted the inequality in education. As far as our pediatricians, we saw like really the crisis of mental health amongst, especially adolescents, adolescents, and younger adults. It was a lot of patients trying to commit suicide when they're still young. And as well, if you're talking about outpatient pediatrics, we see increased rate of pediatrician, because children stay at home, they eat, and they do whatever they want. This is about remote learning. When we had this remote learning, and then we had this kind of like mitigation guideline, mitigation strategy, on the other hand, like we didn't see other viruses around us. I will tell you, like from my own experience, like we didn't have any RSV infections last season, 2020 to 2021, in this season. Zero of cases in the community. Right now, we're already seeing RSV cases around, this is very unusual. So RSV usually affects younger children, but they usually get this from adults, or adults can just be asymptomatic, or really they might have just really false symptoms. But younger children, they require ventilation, they require high-quality care. I'm not sure how many people in the community really knows about RSV. I'm not sure how many people in community really knows about our resources to keep our children safe and healthy. We only have pediatric bans, we don't have any intensive care bans in town. Not in UPUC, not at LAHNI Health Network. So that's mean that if any of our children who get sick, they will have to be lifelighted. We had several children who were lifelighted too. One of them was likely to buckle, another one to pit group. And when it's winter and it's bad weather, it takes nine hours. Like today in good weather, it took four hours to transfer a child. All right, so we just have to consider those kind of indications when we think about the guideline. So why we support universal masking? First of all, we have a really large group of children who are not eligible for vaccine here. This vaccine is very promising, we have like so many children and so many people who say this vaccine is safe and efficient and it's preventing from really severe illness and from death. So many of you probably heard about severe complications, sometimes it can be really fatal complication, multi-system, some are respiratory, some are children. So children who have been exposed or who have had COVID might develop this complication. So basically, they have inflammation around the body parts, different body parts. That's with the brain, eyes, heart, lungs, kidneys, gastrointestinal tract, everything. Unfortunately, we have several lethal outcomes of this illness. I used to live in South Texas in Corpus Christi where like I'm still in touch with my co-residents who experience right now Delta variant. They're running after, they don't have any vaccine available in ICU. It's land with COVID cases, this new variant is affecting more children than it used to be in the past. So it's really easy to transmitable, more easier than we believe for other children. So and that's why we really support digital masks due to those reasons. All right, and I know that I'm pediatrician myself and I'm parent myself. So I have two children, one of them is vaccinated, another one is not eligible here. So my children will go to school in masks. But again, if they, this is normal student behavior, they're going to see somebody else without masks. It's really, they want to follow examples, they want to be the same. And especially with the peer pressure, it can be a really big problem. So I really would, I really support universal masking and vaccination. I think that we had a vaccination clinic that was done last year before, you know, before school was closed, was really successful. And I hope that we like, we're able to, to get with other vaccination clinics, especially when we have those vaccine approved for kids who's younger, from five to 11. And I, I as well as support Dr. Fox's idea about the can be available for younger group of children. It probably will be November to October for them getting to my home when we just have those situations. Okay? Just one, I'm sure you can just finish off. Sorry. And I know like as a parent and pediatrician, parenting a child is not easy. But we always have to make choices for those who are not able to make them. But we have to remember, we are responsible for the choices and the consequences of the choices. And so that's why we have really good tools to keep, to keep our children safe at school. And this is universal masking and vaccination for those who are eligible. All right? Thank you very much for your attention.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We will take public comment on the same issue, if anyone else was not, then re-announce if anyone else wants to speak. My board policy, we do minutes allotted for unannounced speakers. Who else? Eury County, a lot, okay? Thank you, I have, gosh, I thought I was running here. A couple of graphs that I want to show you from the Eury County Department of Health.
Dr. Kinke, while you're looking for that.
Yep.
Could you show us where to find the letters from Dr. Nyer and Emily Sears?
Yeah, they're in, they're in the E23 board material under board correspondence. And I have both of them on one letter. I think right here, it's the board correspondent. I thought I had, sorry, I can find it here. Ms. Thomas, which one do you want to start with?
Let's start with the close contact quarantine protocol.
This one here?
The one that looks more like three, yeah.
Okay, so this came to us from the Eury County Department of Health. They made some modification, they sent us an original document. Then last week, they made some modifications and they did put both their logo on here as well as the IU5 logo. That's Eury County, IU5, and Henbarrow. And so this is the protocol that schools are to follow. It's a little confusing and, but Abby understands it pretty well, she's going to do her best to explain it.
Hi, Greg Glenn, thank you so much for having me tonight. So, yeah, so I will, I guess, you know, the thing is that if this is your first time having a look at this graphic, be prepared to have your head spin. It's pretty confusing, but as Dr. Kinke said, the information is all there and I feel like I have a pretty good graph on it, especially after studying this along with like some associated resources from the Health Department and also the CDC. So I think, before we get into it, my biggest takeaway from this is that, you know, when you combine like continued social distancing with masking along with vaccinating our students, those are our biggest tools that we have, again, you know, to protect students from having to quarantine, to keep kids in school, those are our biggest, you know, weapons that we have at our disposal. So this is only going to apply to students who are close contacts, so this does not apply to students who are symptomatic. So when you look at this graphic, it's like, where do you start? Because there's not like a really clear starting point here. But I think, you know, really, it doesn't really matter where you start, it kind of all takes you the same way. So we'll go through it and I'll try to be brief about it, but it is, like I said, really confusing. If anybody has any questions about any of the scenarios, like you can stop me or save them till the end, like either way, it's fine with me. But like, I think let's just go ahead and start on the left-hand side. So like, when we have a student who's a close contact, who's been exposed to a case, then we can like immediately just kind of say, okay, did this exposure occur in school or did it occur out in the community? So if the answer is no, it didn't occur in school and it occurred out in the community, then from there, we can ask a couple more additional questions for this student. The first is just kind of briefly rule out the fact that the student might have already had COVID-19 within the last 90 days. And if they've had COVID within the last 90 days, then that does exclude them from being in quarantine and they can keep coming to school. So if this isn't one of those students who have tested positive within the last 90 days, then we can then say, is this student vaccinated or unvaccinated? If they're unvaccinated and it's a case occurred in the community, not in our school, then that student would need to quarantine. If they're vaccinated, then at that point, they're allowed to continue coming to school. So those vaccinated students are protected from being quarantined. And prior to this mask mandate today, there is a lot of this in here where these students that have been vaccinated, they can actually, so they would be required if they were exposed to wear a mask, even if there wasn't a mask mandate in place, those students would be required to wear a mask in school and they could test out of wearing that mask. Again, in the environment that there wasn't a mask mandate on day three to five. And they don't specify here whether that needs to be a PCR or an antigen test. So that would be a test that we could offer them with the test kits that we have in school. But that would be again down the road when we're out of substantial or high and potentially this mask mandate gets lifted. So that is written into this protocol and that's basically like what that means when you see that. So that's like a special consideration for a student who's been vaccinated. Okay, so those are kind of cases that occur in the community. If the exposure occurred in school, then from that point, we're going to ask ourselves this question. Were the students spaced greater than three feet apart? Or I guess it'd be easier to explain it like, were they not with less than three feet apart for greater than 15 minutes? If they kind of breached that social distancing thing and one of the students wasn't masked, then that student would then need to quarantine. And the quarantine period is similar to last year where it's recommended that it's 14 days, but we have been allowed to drop it to 10 days with continued monitoring for that last four days of the quarantine period. But what's new this year is the county is allowing people to test out of quarantine. However, that has to be a PCR test. So that would not be a test that we would be able to offer students come to campus, we and the department will administer the test. Those aren't the test kits that we have, so they would have to have that test done at a site in the community that offers the PCR test. So if the students were, meet the criteria, both students are wearing masks and there was never a time where they were less than three feet for greater than 15 minutes, then they don't need to quarantine and they can continue coming to school. So that's kind of like the gist of this and it kind of takes you through this like decision tree. And again, element, I think it's really hard to read. And, you know, there may be a way to make this more user-friendly for our staff and I'd be happy to do that using the same information, but just kind of making it more easy to kind of follow through and make the logical decision when we're faced with it on the fly, when we're on the phone with somebody or something like that. But basically, that explains the guidance that we've been given from the Health Department. So will you guys have any questions about this before we move on to the other one, which is a lot easier to understand? So. A well-fitted mask? So a well-fitted mask would be a facial covering that is, you know, that fits like snugly and doesn't have, that it covers the nose and the mouth and there aren't open areas where it's not like loose fitting, where, you know, it's like well-fitted to the face.
Abby, I did notice one discrepancy as well, maybe either Dr. could chime in. The CDC guidelines, maybe it's not here, but the CDC guidelines still use the word cumulative minutes? Cumulative minutes? But Eury County has been using consecutive minutes. And I know that's what Eury County is adopting this year as well. So that 15 minutes of consecutive times within three feet or less.
Yeah, from what I understand, oh, I'm sorry, I don't want to like, from what I understand, and correct me if I'm wrong, but it is in Eury County still that consecutive 15 minutes. However, if there are some circumstances where you can use your judgment, where if somebody was like directly coughed on or if it was a situation where there was a lot of close contact all throughout the day, where there was that breach continuously throughout the day, that we could make a judgment and say, this feels like we can consider this an exception.
There's a lot of context going on with that because this ring here, if we're all masked or all distanced, would allow a lot more time than a typical classroom. And the one thing we're learning is that the virus doesn't circulate out as quickly for a smaller room than that's larger room, because we're in circulation. So 15 minutes has to do with near somebody unmasked to really be completely honest 15 minutes. Everything else gets chipped. So we're talking about it for some other venues that I'm at, and they basically said, like in my office, for instance, if I'm in an exam room with somebody who's not vaccinated, and they can choose that to tip to wear their mask. My exam room is about the size of this corner right here for myself, the wall, and the door to that wall. I don't have 15 minutes in there with that person because it's such a small space and it's so confined. The time shrinks. So is it consecutive or is it cumulative? I think it's both. Does that make sense? And I think that's why the wording overlaps because it all takes into effect. Right here, if we're all unmasked and sitting six feet apart, we probably have more than 15 minutes before we worry about getting to the door. Yeah, 15 minutes would still be the time. Want to answer your question?
Yeah, me exactly.
Well, I support the, if you think we kind of the, called cumulative, we love consecutive, we have a big part of the conversation. You know, the question is that we'll practice with ourselves, practice, just amount of the time spent together.
Thank you. Everybody, is there another question over here?
I was just curious about the asterisk about the teachers and other adults and the, is there a whole other protocol that applies to the adults?
The largest green box in the box.
Yeah, the one in the center, you're talking about, it does not apply.
Teachers, staff, or adults in the indoor are, you know, I think that that's a really good question because why did they specify that, right? And I would say that, you know, the teachers, the staff, the adults in the classroom setting would go by the definition of close contact from the Health Department, which would be, you know, I'm sorry, like it sounds like I'm like confused right now, but like I'm really not sure why they specified that. Have you heard from them about why they put that asterisk in there?
No, I think the only explanation is that this, the rule for quarantine is for students to make it a plus set. They emphasize that a couple of times.
Yeah.
I think the assumption here is the faculty is vaccinated.
So an adult in a school setting would follow whatever they have on their Eury County Department of Health website for general quarantine rules would look different than this.
Right. That's, I guess, what I was getting at and you would determine whether they were vaccinated or unvaccinated and begin from there.
So if kids do, if their mask looks down, then they would, they would be a no for that very first block. And it would be this, we're expecting, like if they're up and down from it, is that correct?
Yeah, I mean, that would be a special situation where a teacher would have to make a judgment call on that the adult that is spending the most time with them in the outdoor setting, you know, that'll be pretty easy because it's like usually one, two people that are with them for the entire day would have to be the ones that would make the judgment, because they won't really have to run.
Here's the next one.
Yes. Okay, so this one is much easier to interpret. This is just another graphic that kind of says the same thing, but just another tool that we can use to help make sense in all these different scenarios. So when you look at this one, like what they've given us, it's okay, so there are two like main scenarios. The orange box at the top is the case, it's the person who's infected, who, and then these other boxes are the people, the students, that are the close contact. So it kind of goes through vaccinated, the student is vaccinated, but was not masked. Then because they're vaccinated, then they can continue coming to school. This doesn't apply for us, well, this would only apply because they're unmasked or could potentially apply in some special circumstances in a school if it's one of the students that has a mask exemption or an area where the students are unmasked. But if they're vaccinated, they weren't masked at the time of the exposure, then they can continue coming to school, but would be required to wear a mask. If we weren't under the mask mandate, then they would be required to wear a mask and could potentially test out of wearing that mask.
I have a quick question on that one because the mandate is indoor. So was that then, that scenario that you just talked about, kick in? If they were outdoors for like an activity or sports setting, if I was vaccinated and they were unmasked? Not breaking the order, it's indoors.
Yeah, the way that it states it is that they would need to wear a mask indoors. And they could test out of wearing that mask on day, we could, we could offer them the test or the parents could take them somewhere in the community and get them tested on days three through five. If they would test negative, then they would no longer be required to wear a mask. If they would test positive, obviously, then they would begin isolating at that point. So vaccinated and masked is the most ideal scenario for us. Both students are masked and the student is exposed and vaccinated. No action is necessary if this would be the case. So in this one, the case is masked, but the student exposed is both unvaccinated and unmasked. As long as they haven't been positive for COVID-19 within the last 90 days, then they would need to quarantine at home. This student here is unvaccinated, but both students were masked and they would not need to quarantine in this situation. So if we move over here where the case is unmasked, then we've got a vaccinated, unmasked student who is exposed. So both students are unmasked, but the student who was exposed is vaccinated, allowed to come to school, required to wear a mask. If we're not under the mask mandate, they still are required to wear a mask but have the ability to test out of that mask. Um, like we said with the other case on days, this has days two to five, but that's a discrepancy. It's, I confirm this on the CDC website, it says three to five. It's a very small, like little nuance there, but it is three to five from my understanding. So, um, so following down, you've got your case who's unmasked, but you've got a vaccinated student who is masked. Because they're vaccinated, they are able to, um, continue coming to school. Same kind of situation where they can test out if we're not under the mask mandate. Now we've got two unmasked students and an unvaccinated student. They would be required to quarantine as long as they haven't tested positive for COVID-19 within the last 90 days. And then you've got your unvaccinated, but only one of the students is masked. Same situation, they would need to quarantine unless they've been positive. Yes.
Here's the three to five day period from discovery of the infected students. What is it?
It would be from the day of contact. So the day of, the last day of contact with that student would be considered a day zero, and the next day would be day one, after that, day two, day three. So that period of three to five days could land on a weekend, you know, but we would be able to, anytime after three days, offer them a test.
If they're in, if they're exposed to that student every day?
Yeah, then it would be their last contact.
Prior to the discovery of the infection.
Right.
Thank you.
So can we put that in our file?
I meant to put it in there, and I can't find it, so I'll make sure I put it in there now.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I'll put it in, uh, supporting documents enough to work.
Thank you.
And we'll also get this published to our website tomorrow.
That was, that was kind of my question too. This is clearly complex, right? So how do we, how do we communicate it to the families in our district in a way that makes sense? And I heard you say you were gonna take a crack at maybe trying to make something that looks a little bit easier to read.
Yeah.
Um, I think that's great, so thank you. I guess feedback to the IU five that put it together, you know, um, maybe they could also try the same thing as well for the community as a whole.
Yeah, I agree.
Because it is super confusing.
It is complicated, and it's going to be very much a case-by-case situation for families, you know, which is kind of like talking to families that are affected through it, but also giving people that kind of heads up that this is what we're going to be following. Yeah, I mean, the last year I made a series of videos explaining some of the different protocols if we have to do something like that for our community, if you think that that would be useful. Um, but yeah, I think that it definitely needs to be like more user-friendly representative to the community so that it's much easier for them to see what the different scenarios and where they may fall, the benefits of masking, the benefits of potentially vaccinating their child if they're in that, the middle of making that decision.
What certainly takes some of the complexity out of it is everyone with a mask. And, and so the mandate today certainly helps in that respect. And much like our parents said tonight, you know, if, and, and we've gotten this, the board has seen several emails, and I've seen several more from parents too, are kind of questioning the board's decision because if their child does the right thing, they send their child doing the right thing, but the child next day doesn't, then the child wearing the mask, so quarantine as well. So in this scenario though, if you kind of, with, with the mask mandate, it kind of takes that out of play, right? And if all the children are correctly wearing a mask. And I have to tell you, and, um, maybe Dr. Serash will speak to this too, but we didn't have many situations last year. I, I would venture a guess that the folks in this room fiddle with their masks more than the children in the elementary schools. That they're just pretty good at, they're actually thousands of adults. And I've heard you say that time and time again, like the young kids are just really good at. We asked, we literally had zero issues at the elementary last year with eight or four students at masks. I, it was never an issue.
Yeah, when they would come in and they forgot, they would be like terrified. It was like, I don't have a mask, and they run in my office to grab one, and it didn't go very soon.
There seem to be so many gray areas. So for instance, we don't necessarily know if a child has been vaccinated or not. And we ask them, you know, parents allow them to answer, so many, uh, so many different scenarios there. So we're not sure if they're vaccinated. Two, we don't know if they're using their masks properly, they're replacing them on a, on a regular basis. So they wear the same mask every day for pretty much straight. We have no idea how effective their mask is. Um, and, you know, if you can play outside and not wear a mask because they're outside or recess, if they're in close contact, even if it is 15 minutes, it doesn't matter that they're outside. So, you know, we can't just rule that out completely either. There are just too many, there are gray, gray areas in there, um, that we need to also consider.
Yeah.
And we, I guess the assumption would be the worst of everything. So they're unvaccinated, um, they didn't have their mask on.
Yeah.
They coughed in somebody's face, um, their mask is pretty much over. I mean, it's all these, we have to assume the worst in every case, um, if we don't know for certain, right?
Right.
Yeah, a couple things to those points. One, I can say that Abby and the nurses, because we met every week last year, they did periodically have the children replace masks. We each heard those, a soiled mask or dirty mask, or they would hear them like. Uh, as far as vaccination status, we are allowed to ask that. And we are to assume, according to Dr. Nadworthy, we're to assume everyone is unvaccinated unless they throw other one. So we're not asking for vaccination to be on trial. Uh, but if it comes down to needing to understand if someone is vaccinated or not, that is a question we will ask. If they don't want to answer or provide it, then we're going to send them to a test.
Can I ask how you're handling teachers and staff with, with vaccination?
Same thing, we don't know which teachers or staff are vaccinated. We're not allowed to have that information, it's private. Um, but we will treat them all as unvaccinated, uh, if they're in close contact issue.
Yeah, and if, if there are significant teacher quarantine situations going on, I'm assuming we're not overly prepared if that happens, right? Like if we have.
Not overly.
Yeah, just based on last year.
Because of stuff, yeah.
Yeah, so. So we, yeah, so I, I was just curious about that thing. So has there been any communication with teachers or staff about their requirements for COVID right now?
Uh, today, I had, uh, some, a discussion with our association, a lot of potential memories and understanding for this school year. But it, it really came out today. And, uh, all the districts received it today. Um, I don't know if Georgia's had fully digested that yet, I certainly haven't fully digested it yet. It came from our association. But it came from the PSE.
It's PSE.
That PSE team, they said it all. It is a template that PSE generated. Uh, each district was able to kind of tweak it, uh, ours changed one item in the central. But we got it today, George has it, Mark also has it. Thank you.
I assume we'll go through that again for sure, like we did last year. Oh, yeah, okay.
We will. Thanks.
I have two second questions, please. Um, anyone with a medical background, you know, about this new PCR, I'd appreciate it. Um, physical education and sports.
So there are several things going on around the country with that. From a sports standpoint, some major colleges are actually requiring vaccinations for 18 members. The professional sports, as you may know, or may not know, Major League Baseball, as you can see on the Seawolves on here, the Seawolves team position. The major league teams, they require the team to be 85% vaccinated or better to, to allow for a non-masking environment within the clubhouse, within the bubble. Our Seawolves team is more than 85% non-vaccinated, vaccinated. Um, so therefore, within the clubhouse, within the dugout, nobody wears a mask. Until two weeks ago, when the cases started to rise, the people who were unvaccinated on the team were required in the dugout and in the clubhouse to start masking themselves, the remainder of the team did not have. So as Dr. King Kane correctly said, we can ask who's been vaccinated. We can mandate, if we wanted to, an 85% or better vaccination rate to average teams. Period, which is what would be consistent with most college sports and professional sports right now, if you look around the country. Now that said, high school sports are not the same, and they've not been treated the same way because it's on a very different level from volunteerism and from community, et cetera. But from a safety standpoint, as we've gone through last year, as you remember, how sports happen, we need to think of long-term and not just short-term. So the recommendation would be to request vaccination. And if you're not, maybe we don't need to have a team as well. That would be my personal recommendation. It's going to be extremely controversial, and I think that would be the safest way to go as far as physical education goes. Depending on what you're doing, you can do it mask or other mask. Those things can be accomplished with masks, okay? Endurance things, not so much. Sprints, not as well. But people are actually able to play sports with masks. So it's going to lead to that, and what you want to be, and how you want to be, and how you want to separate people out. So physical education, I think we'd be treated just like school. Sports teams, I personally am talking to Dr. Nadworthy, would look more toward what colleges are doing, and what the professional sports are doing, if you feel along keeping. It's extremely controversial, and I've gone to the record, speaking for myself, not for them. And Howard would say it's Dr. Nadworthy would say it's. That's, I'm going to answer your question.
It's not the night one works.
Kelly, to that, to that point also, in the order today, there is an exception for athletics. So in the, uh, in the executive order by Melissa Line here, it says, individuals engaging in extracurricular activities that cannot reasonably be undertaken while masked. So that would include playing an instrument, that would include people playing a sport. Um, we didn't require masks on the basketball court last year, but we're requiring them when you came over to the bench. So the students who were participating in physical activity, and, and the same in gym class. We actually did require them in gym class, but when they were in school.
May I speak to the last sentence, or the last part of the sentence, playing certain physical instruments? My child, um, my younger child, who came through here, is now a junior at Middle Tennessee State University, and he's one of the clarinet teachers. And last year, their 360-person band shrunk to about 178 people because of COVID. They all played masks, with a slip of the mask and with masks on the bells of their instruments. The entire band, I can show you videos of how well that actually worked. So it can be done, and has been done, and is being done this year, actually. Um, and his band, which is now just under 300 because of the mask band. So that can't actually be done.
May I ask one more?
It's up to you.
Children's comment about that may have been vaccinated. Do you expect the vaccine to be in all capacity, your capability?
Okay, so look at the numbers out of Israel. And Israel is months and months ahead of us because they started the original research back in 2013, when SARS research and vaccines started, and mRNA research started. In Israel, they're seeing after 15 and 16 months, that the vaccine, which, just to give you guys a little bit of background of the vaccine work. The vaccine right now is about 95, between 90 and 95% effective in keeping you from getting a high enough viral load to make you sick. It doesn't necessarily keep you from getting the virus, but it keeps you from getting a high enough viral load to get you sick. It's about 95% effective. It's a high enough percentage to keep you from getting sick. Also, a low enough viral load to keep you from getting it from someone else. You're about 95% sure you're not going to get sick and die. You're about 95% sure you're not going to get a high enough viral load of capacity to your relative who is immunocompromised. After about 15 to 16 months of finding in Israel, that's dropping to about 70%. So the reason we're recommending the booster at eight months after the second shot is because as your immunity starts to slowly go down to 70%, you hit a booster, you keep it at that level where it won't go to 90, which the whole thing of 85 to 90% keeps your virb immunity alive. So do I think it's their lane? I do. But I think we are far enough away from that window because people are still just getting their first vaccine. But it's not going to be a big issue this school year. Next school year, if COVID is still around, we'll be talking boosters. If COVID is not around, then we won't be having meetings like this. So, okay.
I'd just like to add as far as physical activity and sports, American Academy judges really support back to physical activities because it's very important for mental health to gain as well, decrease risk of COVID-19. But multiple tasks for activities should be, you know, in priority. So they have like contact sports, like wrestling, this is considered to be high-risk activity. And as well, when they are not, and the majority of the cases when people want to have COVID and possibly challenge on like sports teams, they usually try to be comfortable with the field. They usually try to, when they can change and like eat together and call it back. So just really, we have to consider mitigation strategies which are valuable for us. So how many people in the, I don't know, field and favorite, um, home group?
Did you say when they eat together?
Yes.
So cafeteria situation?
I mean, we have to still consider mitigation strategies as well, so social distancing and, uh, right to support the mitigation strategy.
Same as last year?
Yes.
Okay.
Especially if you consider that, as well, we can get adjusted, we consider every wide.
Okay, thank you.
Cafeteria is certainly a challenge for us. We said that at the last meeting, say that, you know, moving forward. The challenge is we, we're back to 100% capacity this year. When we were 50% capacity, we could keep pretty good distance in the cafeteria. We're going to struggle to keep three feet distance in the cafeteria this year. We are doing some other things that are recommended, such as seating charts, assigning seats. Uh, if there is an outbreak in the cafeteria, we don't think it will affect, uh, a large number of people. It won't affect the students on either side of an individual. Um, but they are not going to be six feet separated in the cafeteria like they were last year. It's not possible with 100% capacity. We just, so we don't have the space for that. And I think all schools are in that.
Are we keeping like the trick room cafe and the alternate seating that we did, or?
Are not. We're, we're going to try to keep them as far apart as we can with the space that we have. And it's, it's going to be tricky. I know Dr. Horn is looking at using the stage. He's also still contemplating using the gymnasium for, for lunch to keep kids as far apart as possible. But that impacts some classroom things with, with that class. At the high school, um, you'll have as many as what, 100?
Yeah, that would be our max, if we were at 100 days.
So it's, it's a little bit more difficult. There are higher ceilings in the cafeteria, it does help with, with some spacing and ventilation, but, uh, if the kids are going to be a little closer together in the cafeteria, that's, that's just logistics of a, of a school building.
With the height, if, if students were on a stage, with the height of a child, with the drop coming out, wouldn't that make, would that make some difference? Would it, no?
Probably not.
What about the masks? Last year, we purchased a lot of masks to be able to hand out to, you know, as to the theme of how are we going on supplies with that? Do we need, do we have enough supplies this year? Do we need more? I know Mr. Mummer has said he had looked into the masks that Dr. Fox was talking about, you know, it's a possibility. And how are we doing with just all around?
I can speak to that. So one, one thing John can speak to, the surgical masks, I can speak to the, like the one that Fran brought, the KN95. We made a mistake last, I made a mistake last year in how I ordered those, and I ordered way too many, which turned out to be a good mistake because we have a bunch left over. I didn't realize that how many were in a carton when we ordered them. So we ordered several thousand, uh, packages of those masks. So we've made a pretty good supply of the KN95, um, which are what is recommended by, um, the CDC and the Department of Health. So we did distribute those to all of our staff last year, and we'll have enough to do that again this year. Um, John has a surgical supply mask.
Yeah, we just ordered a 4,000 adult masks, and, uh, they're much more readily available this year. And then we had enough youth masks left over, so we were a bit challenged. And still the bus garage is going to have a lot on every bus. We have.
Well, just the last thing then, um, there is a motion this evening to adopt the Health and Safety Plan. This is the one that you adopted on August 9th. Um, so if there would be interest in, uh, amending this plan tonight, um, you can make a motion to do so this evening. Um, just a reminder, when we approved this last meeting, under the mask section here, it talks about fairview will be in universal masking if the county is high and fairview is high. I can tell you based on the, um, the local data from the Erie County Department of Health, fairview is high for a county, and Erie County is high. So without the mask mandate from the county executive, we would be masking at least our school based on this approved document from last meeting.
What are you, or something?
I, I, I got the information from the Department of Health.
Is that public?
No.
I second it.
We're not, we're, we're not in the meeting yet.
Oh, okay.
We'll, we'll get there. So the Department of Health was issuing, um, they issue a map about county supervisors. On the map, it shows how many cases are within your school this year. Uh, after our last meeting. Uh, after our last meeting, I told you that they suspended that, that map. They suspended it for one week. So I didn't get it two weeks ago, but I got it last week. And rather than give us one week's worth of data, which they did, because they gave us two weeks' worth of data. So Fairview in the two weeks, up to meeting up to August 15th, I believe, we had 20 cases in the Fairview split. So that would be an average of 10 per week over the last two weeks. That would put us into that, that high status. And of course, we know the county is in that. So based on that information, what I was planning on doing is, because I get that on Thursday, if we stay with this, um, uh, this approved format and the current plan, I would get that on Thursday, we would evaluate that. Abby and I, as a team, would evaluate that. And on Friday, we would make the call for a fall week. Like Brad said, you know, it becomes like a snow day if we do anything different than that. So we would make it on Friday to the week, um, the next week. And as of right now, we would be starting the year with masks, based on this plan.
So can I take a little deeper into the data, like, and how you get it? And then all the superintendents get this data set?
Yes.
Is that right? And then it just goes to you only, to everyone? That's it, right?
Correct.
And then you would then share it with Abby. What other, what are others, and that's okay for you to share with Abby, right?
And I can share with our community as well. I can share the document, but I can share the not. So I can tell you that August 1st to August 15th, there were 20 cases in Fairview. I can't report the number because you were in the, uh, diaphragm.
But really, I mean, it's, it's, it's on your word, right? Not that you wouldn't give us your word, but it's, you're the only person to see it, right?
I am the only person.
Okay, that's all I wanted to know.
And, and George, um, and I have talked about this. It's not subject to our right to know request. It's called under Public Health Law. Um, I spoke with Melissa Line, the Department of Health, about it. Um, and they did suspend it for a week while they consulted it with their supervisor because they didn't consider confidential information because it could be identifying information to an individual. Didn't also that word to you because he didn't confirm that.
Yeah. So I just, I, I mean, not my key motion, I'm making it verbalizing my thought on, you know, right now, the state health and safety plan, I mean, I don't want to say it doesn't matter, but this part of it doesn't matter. Um, and it's my understanding, we can change this at any time.
Right.
So I came into the, just my thought process thinking, why wouldn't be amended to say, you know, we will follow the Erie County Department of Health Universal Masking Order as it stands as of right now. When that expires, we probably can be, I mean, I guess, I just think, as we know, because six weeks ago, or even a month ago, we were going into this in a whole different way, you know, knowing that we're going to be changing this as it goes. I guess I would think, why would we just make it say, we're following the order that's in place right now? When the order expires, we can say, well, God.
The governor funded school districts. So school districts spent the entire summer putting this district in our last standing five hours, discussing a universal mask mandate, and then at the last minute, our county executive, one call at the last minute, we force school start, county executive instituted a universal mask mandate. So, um, you know, we were left blowing in the wind, uh, since, you know, July, well, July, when the CDC guideline changed. There's that. So yeah, I agree. I think it should just merely mirror as whatever mandates are imposed by federal, state, and local authorities. And leave it at that for now.
We do that.
What? Because otherwise, you know, what's the point? It's ready, ready, it's moved. Our entire five years, five-hour, uh, summer-long discussion, uh, was rendered moot yesterday. And, uh, why, why put it out to the districts, um, discretion? And we're not public professionals. We get recommendations for all kinds of things. We have recommendations to go to ITAS, we get recommendations to do this for them. You got to make the ultimate decision. And granted, your hand. And then, um, and then we have to make this decision based on gut feeling and, and, uh, we're, we're never going to please anybody because half the town is going to hate us and half the town is going to support us. So now we have a mandate, and why, so why do we need a policy? To me, I would hyprogen, which is adopt whatever, whatever public health mandate is in place at the time. And if there isn't one, we'll, we'll handle it then.
I think that's such a dynamic fluid concept.
Like I said last time, we had a guy with a gun on his sidearm come in and tell us he was going to shut us down last year. We didn't follow the guy. You can do what you want, but, you know, here's, here's the gun, here's the mandate. I shut down bars and restaurants all the time. So what's the point of having a district enacted policy when we're mandated by some unfunded mandate? Can't build new space. We can't, we can't, you know, spread kids out to six feet and educate them at the same time. It's an unfunded mandate, but we're going to follow it. So that should be the policy. I guess the counterargument, though, Ellen, is that you're hearing from a pediatrician and a local physician, and the CDC, and the Department of Health, who are all saying, um, that this is the policy that you should be following, yet our school district has a policy that's vastly different from that.
And it's going to be a time lag. There will be a time lag from the time that they change, the time we pull, we pull, we pull.
I know. Yeah, that's one brand.
I think that it's important to have the policy so if the mandate is ever lifted, or if anything ever changes from the mandate, we can say, well, we'll follow that mandate. But if there isn't one in place, we need to have something. It's too confusing for our community to possibly be changing. I mean, you say, we told the one thing last year that we were going to follow by certain numbers, and we changed that. I think we need to have a policy that's in place as an underlying, um, policy to any, any governmental mandate. And I think that it is important to note that we have the American Academy of Pediatrics. We have physicians. We have epidemiologists. We have the CDC, we have the local health department. Everybody is telling us that mandatory masking is the only way that we're going to be able to stop the spread within our schools. Um, especially because probably half the school population is unvaccinated because of high healthcare level. The only way that we're going to be able to keep the kids in school, I, I would present, I'm going to make a motion that we have mandatory masking in our policy. To, 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 to fall back, should any one of us mandate. We have mandatory masking for all of our students and all of our faculty when we are anything other than well, because that's what these people recommend it. They're the experts, and we need to listen to them. And the fact that it doesn't want to wear around, or it's inconvenient, or whatever, it doesn't matter. And if the half the population, their view ends up disagreeing with us and not liking what we're saying, it's too bad. One of the, one of our, one of our responsibilities is to keep the children safe, and keep them in school, and to educate them. And the only way to do that, I don't see any other way to do it when, when we have numbers like we have. In order to do that, we need to look at one number, the CDC, the local Department of Health, and follow CDC guidelines. The local Department of Health numbers. If it's anything above well, we need to make masking mandatory.
The mandate is, I believe, substantial or high. If, so our own, our own county executive relying on her doctor professionals are, is, is suggesting universal masking from substantial or high. Well, I don't know that the mask, I don't know that the mandate actually says that, but I know that that term tent is, keep the mandate off.
He doesn't specialize.
We can't go over a tent.
He realizes, but it's all moderate in there as well. It's the only way we're going to be able to do it. To do anything else would be careless and irresponsible of us.
She doesn't spell that out in the order. Um, but I know that that's, that's the intent of the order. Is they're not going to lift the order until we're out of state. But most, most school districts put it in place, some with high, uh, which us, in the part of great. And others were completely off to. The feedback that I got from a lot of community members, as well as several board members, was that this policy is a bit ambiguous. And like, like Jim said tonight, it does rely on one piece of data that one person here received. Um, where the CDC data, you can click on the map and see that Erie County is high any given day. What's the motion available by?
We, we need to make it simple and clear and easy for people to find. So that no question is to what we're dealing with, whether there's a mandate in place, whether a government mandate placed or not.
That's a question for George. Okay. So the resolution that we have that allows Dr. K to be able to move to places under disruption, does that also cover masking? So if, just, this is just an if. If we went to something like Jennifer said, and we said we're following the local mandate, and it expired before we met again, would he have the authority to say, this is what we're going with until the board meets again?
I would have to look at that resolution, but I think it's built mode of disruption, not masking. So I would have to say, probably not.
So that would be a whole separate piece of any motion that we would have.
And we would likely have to convene an emergency meeting if there was a time between the lift of this order and our next board meeting. And the decision needs to be made. Probably, if this doesn't change, we would probably have to convene another meeting. My, my concern is this, uh, there is, as mine is, I understand the position recommendation in letters, is that universe, the recommendations are pretty much universal masking regardless of rates of global infection. So what, you know, that, that to me says that even if we get below, there's fairly modest rate of infection in Erie County, we're going to still be masking at school. That's what we're hearing.
That's what we heard, yes. So that is a constitution. So American Academy of Pediatrics does not really, uh, specify a position of, we support universal masking in the dungeons of this.
Regardless of rates of global infection.
Yeah.
Until what time?
Until when? Forever.
Until we get vaccination rates to up to 95%, that we would have a reasonable vaccination for all students at school?
The person on this board is a physician or an epidemiologist.
I'm sure, I'm sure all of you have read the other opinions out there. I mean, there are two sides to this. Well, there's plenty of recommendations I've read from pediatricians. You can talk about, you know, the detrimental things about masking children. I mean, there are two sides to this. And so anything that says universal masking with no, like,
Trigger.
Trigger, if, and, but, or this scenario, to me, I don't know. That doesn't seem like a reasonable approach. Like, why would we do it with some kind of, I mean, when it's low transmission, when we're talking, what is that like? That hundred percent, this and all, you know, I didn't know. Personally, I personally don't. When I asked, when I asked a local Fairview physician before our last meeting, who was in Fairview, is a doctor, is going to Fairview, he sent me to an impact article from a pediatrician who was opposed to universal masking for, for students. So I mean, they're, they're out there, both opinions. I don't know which is right. I'm just saying both opinions from experts are out there.
I just can't live with the fact, regardless of that. I think if you really would like find it, like looking for evidence to find it, you also must, you will find it. I have not seen, like, really evidence-based research study, proof in the, uh, masks are really finding out true. I have not seen myself personally. All right? But we, we see lots of children who were affected by COVID, and some of them had little outcomes. Okay? And again, I always have this conversation with families when they refuse assigned intervention. Like today, my mother refused vitamin K. And I told her there was a risk of 30% that your child might die or have severe neurological defects. But she, you know, she just decided to put at risk your child. Okay, because this is your child. And she's an individual who is taking this decision for her own child. But we were talking about a, a public place, public involved place, where everybody is sending their children for education. And everybody probably would agree that it might be for them to stay in person learning for this one year. And that's why there's a very far-fetched organization about universal masking, regardless of vaccination, and regardless of transmission rate. It might change as we go by. Again, if we have a triple vaccine, if we have the vaccination rate really high in community, I think we're going to have different recommendations. But at this point, we're not there yet.
Dr. Schraft, do you know a doctor, uh, in your circle that doesn't recommend masking?
And I don't tell you, actually. So, um, like, of course, like psychiatrists, dermatologists, and all the physicians, they want to suspend licenses for people who spread in kind of like, you know, all schools. And really, uh, that information that is not really true, and with no evidence for this information. This is what they do, like, they take those approaches. So suddenly, licenses for people, physicians who are, you know, even recommendations are given. And I don't know, like, any person in my, they've been quite, like, practicing physicians. So whether they're seeing flu, they're going to see an R S V. We usually see this in December and in January. We prepare to have, like, double, triple cases in comparison to other years. And then again, I think in the community, we have to remember what we have available. We don't think in New York City, where sleep on the pit, we don't have pediatrician.
Can I ask a question? Because I don't know. Um, did, did our county executive have an order for anything else besides school? Like, did she order restaurants and bars? Just school?
It's just school. Those are compulsory.
Come on.
It's a request. I think that's one of the. If you read, you read the order, uh, they talk about the fact that large segment of the city are not able to keep that. Okay. That was kind of surprising. I'm, I'm focused on that. But I think that's. Prepaid as well, in the order.
Thank you, I just didn't know, thanks.
I don't think it's, um, I don't think it's, um, he could have, she could extend the order to businesses and restaurants as well. Uh, I think right now she's chosen not to. I think last week at her press conference, the Dr. Schraft participant, she floated the idea to kind of take the temperature a little bit of the community. And, uh, I think she got the pre-overlapse support, and, and that's why she pulled the trigger.
I mean, I, you know, the order is substantial or high. I mean, last week I came to her, I thought that's the order as well. Obviously, you know, if it was substantial or high, um, I, I don't think it's a reasonable public health strategy. I'm uncomfortable with things that just have it as an open-ended forever and ever, despite whatever transmission rate. But that's just where I get a little, um, working with it, like, where's the, the end point? We're at an end point, and then a research. I mean, I just thought we've changed so much, we should be prepared to keep changing based on certain factors.
Agree. I think, I think, Jen, even, even two weeks ago, uh, things have changed since you voted on this two weeks ago. Things are different today. And this order today did differ. The feedback that I got from some board members after the last meeting was, it was the "and" that threw them off. It was the Erie County "and" Fairview, that some folks would have been more comfortable with than "or" instead of "he." So that's, that's, that's an option. Um, but you, anyone can make a motion this evening to amend the, the health and safety plan, uh, to, to have "or," or to have "substantial or high," or however you want. Or I think last year's health and safety plan had a, a near statement of compliance that they go for, um, general mandates. I know the topic was last year. I, I think my fear is this, this, Alan. I, I would just say to the board that if you're comfortable with the way the health and safety plan is reached right now, then, then don't take any actions with this. If, if, if you're not comfortable with the way it reads right now, I would plan on at some point this, this mandate being lifted or challenged legally. So if it's not available to us, if we don't have this mandate from the county executive for Erie County, we're going to have to fall back on our plan. So have a plan that you're comfortable with. Tonight's probably, good night, that we have in place. You're right, it's moot to start the year. Uh, but at some point, it may become applicable. It gets something that you're comfortable with.
I just want to say, I think, one thing that many community, community members with whom I've interacted, three on, they'd like the children to be able to go to school in person. It seems like one of the things they were most against was the idea of not being able to go to school, having, having to attend school remotely. Regardless of their position with respect to COVID and everything else, I think almost everyone can agree that whatever allows us to have the most in-person, the most normal in-person instruction possible in-person instruction possible is something that most parents feel comfortable with in our community. Even parents who initially were against mask mandates seem to be able to understand that the masks are relatively small and convenient compared to hospitalizing your child, or compared to, compared to sending all children home from school. And I think in light of that, we should be able to mask mandate, at least to some reasonable degree. As far as when it ends, I don't know. We're reacting to changes that occurred even after our meeting. We didn't know all the things we know now, it's been two weeks. So there are various people in the community with different, different amounts of knowledge, different areas of knowledge, but I think we can safely understand that masking in school, not everywhere, but in school, is, is a reasonable step. And even for people who were somewhat opposed to it, I think it's a reasonable thing to do in school.
I agree, that should be a level, I think, maybe spread and figure it. I don't think we should have this open-ended policy where regardless of rates of transmission, what was it though? You have one case in the whole county that was low, over something of a basket. And, uh, that, that would be a very responsible. I think it should be a trigger. I'd be willing to support the trigger, that matches the current mandate, substantial or high. I think it's a reasonable approach. But, um, all of that, I think it's, it's, I think that we could have mask mandate in our, in Fairview, uh, our Fairview schools when there are, you know, like, annual cases and some remote, um, district in this, in this county, that what is this, low is a, is a pretty wide range, I would imagine, from one to whatever. Um, and we're going to be masking here to, uh, insignificant rate of infection. I understand the recommendation, and so there's a vaccine for children across the board. Uh, but then, even though, even though the doctor recommendations are regardless of vaccination, regardless of infection, that to me is just too much, uh, to alter, um, alter this, this, um, in our, alter our, I, I would, I would, I think that's what the county executive did was responsible because of the lack of statewide guidance, you know, from people, you know, the state is charged with the duty to regularly tell welfare and safety of these members of the community, citizens of the state. Not, not the county, not the city, not school districts, the state. We part, and you split it, five hundred school districts inside five hundred different policies. Just follow the CDC. It doesn't work like playing such diverse communities like, like, uh, Erie counties or any county here in state for that number. Um, but in the absence of that statewide guidance, we're left with, we're left, again, until the last minute with no, with no real direction that, that under, that's non, non-medical professionals, they just sit. Now we have a mandate, we want to incorporate that mandate into a policy that, that will survive the mandate.
Uh, I think, I think what, what we're hearing, maybe just to summarize, I don't want to move on, but I think what you're hearing is, I think you can give majority support here for, uh, if the county transmission rate is substantial or high, uh, just like the order says, the dirty stuff, I think that's what we're hearing. I'm hoping that's what we're hearing.
That would at least get us through if the mandate expires.
That's right. What mask mandate.
So recently, we have the same thing in place until we meet again, if it is correct, yeah. Not saying it does, but if it is correct, then at least it carries us through if the order expires.
I really just don't want to support the, um, the one data set that, oh my gosh, it's a big case. Do anything that has that in there, and I would probably go to, yeah, a county substantial or a county that's, you're about to see the, uh, president.
So central, however you're counting.
Yeah, that's fine. It's long as it's public information.
I agree with that, I'll hold on to that side with everybody, at least for now. Because it may be different two weeks from now when our hosting is reported.
Why is it different?
I think that's two different. So you mean, what's going on with the information, mandates, you know, might be back to shutdowns? Who knows what it's going to be?
Well, every school district's health and safety plan is going to be on the back order, at least for now, right? While the mandate is, is in the county, but if that should be lifted, then we have to have something to fall back on.
So, um, I would support amending the health and safety plan to incorporate universal masking when Erie County, uh, rate, rate of infection, as determined by the C C tracker, is substantial or high. Has nothing to do with the mandate, but it obviously matches the mandate's, uh, terms. There's trouble.
You're saying, you're saying it's fifty first, fifty cases or more, more than fifty cases per day?
I'm just saying, whatever the county executive deemed to be appropriate per mandate, it's what I would, I would support incorporating the revised mandate here, because definitely we don't have to amend, we don't have to rush it, change anything, um, which, if the mandate is ever lifted.
But did she specifically say substantial or high?
She didn't say that in the order, she said that to me though, but.
But she didn't say that in the order, so I'm still convinced.
That's what I'm going to move to amend. But anybody want to support, need to support that? And or high, rate of infection.
I'm going to see what you're going to do.
No, I.
I'm not saying, I'm not saying what's wrong.
Say substantial or high, maybe you can go on. You know, just, just. Dr. Chaste, were you given any feedback from the health department about what criteria they are using to keep our school open or to decide what, how many public teams are shut down?
Oh, boy.
Because I think that, to me, that's where.
I was hoping nobody would ask that question, because it's really, it's really confusing guidance right now, really confusing guidance. It's not a guidance at all. It's, it's, um, it's three, it's three, what was the word I think? Three, um. Uh, you heard the word that you, you heard the word that you.
Was it like three consecutive pairs?
Pairs, yeah. Pair, yes, just three pairs of cases in a building. So three separate rooms that have outbreaks that do a trigger and shut them. So it's a minimum of six cases in a building, put it down now. It's really fuzzy guidance right now, though. They were still working on it, um, but that's what was introduced to us last week.
So pair, pair is like two people in contact?
Uh, it was someone that's a positive case who infects another person in that same state. So I'm positive, George gets positive because of me, that's one. And you need three of those to close down. What if you and Margaret are four, you go three parts, that's one, three. So the same infected people. That's why it's really buzzy right now. Yeah, it was just like an initial guidance that was given to us last week, and it's not clear, they were going to review with pandemic coordinators and try to get some better, but, but, okay, that's what they're looking at right now. They're not going to make it. Originally, they said to us, hey, if you have one athlete who gets COVID, we're, we're going to probably shut down your sports team. They changed that much. And now it's a multiple athletes on the team, take multiple athletes on a team, uh, to shut down.
But we want our, we want our four schools to have our.
Sorry, what?
I'm sorry. If our, if our school shuts down, all of our extracurriculars shut down.
That is, that is a case, yeah.
Right, right. But, so whatever masking plan we come up with has to be something that prevents us from getting those three pairs. So if, if we need that substantial or high is going to keep us from getting those three pairs, then that's good. If we don't think so, then we have to step back, because the whole goal is to not get those three pairs.
Correct.
I have a question about the doctors, just to tighten it down a little, please. When you are all tested same, or does it make a difference how many days you, you have symptoms before you test? So if you test within twenty-four hours and it says negative, does that necessarily mean it's negative?
It depends on the provision, so it's really, it's not necessarily that it's negative.
So someone can get a negative, report that it's negative, and they're not negative. Am I correct?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you very much.
But that's why it says you gotta go, you can't apply the window.
The when year.
Anytime, yeah.
Actually, it's day five, they can test on or after day five.
Yes, it is.
First day of study.
I mean, I had a rash here, and I just went on the Erie County Department of Public Health site, looked at the day I was exposed to a person who tested positive, even though I didn't have symptoms. Got my test on day five, you know, got my results on day seven, which meant I could get out of quarantine on day ten.
But they're saying three to five is what I'm saying. And three to five or not?
That was confusing. So the three to five applies to the scenario where we're not under a mask mandate. So we decide under a health and safety plan that we're not requiring mask wearing at school, but a student who's vaccinated can continue coming to school if there are close contacts, but they have to wear a mask, and they can test on wearing the mask. So that's very confusing, how is there's a difference, like, day, like, for day ranges for the different scenarios?
If my understanding is correct with this question, different masks have different qualities. So they may be fitted well, but the quality of the mask may differ substantially. Is that correct or incorrect?
True.
I need to be a ninety-five K and ninety-five, I think it's really a really.
No, I agree. I, I agree.
You just sort of have to be cautious every game. Children really like to be structured environment. So when they have a sample, when they have a lead, they have a public support. But they have kind of like mixed messages for them that where.
And when they're ill, they can recover it whatever rate it gives for their body. Mental illness from not going to school and not being in school and not being repaired, does that kill overnight? Or?
No, it doesn't, it doesn't happen overnight. So again, I can tell you that from just the last year, period, they had several children from our community, depression, suicide, and, you know, hospitalized. And it's happening, unfortunately, and like, we see more and more cases. I, I don't have a date, I don't, I don't know, I, I don't know if I'll even tell you how many, it's a present, I should, or we've got our, and I can posture, but, uh, today what happened.
But there was even a way to get into the metal floor here at Lee Combs?
I mean, I'm, I'm, I don't know, I mean, we're there, but.
Okay, okay.
So it's a little bit entertaining a motion then, uh, when we get to that point, I think we have a motion.
Or a serious motion. I'm looking for. I, I second.
I don't think we have a vote. Or I don't even think we have a struggle.
Yeah, we're not ready for, we're not ready for a vote yet.
I'm saying we don't have a.
We don't have consensus on what that.
So part of this puzzle for me at least is last time, because of the way we were seated and the volume rating that was me, and I didn't realize, I could hear, I didn't realize that I could listen. And the vote was five to four, and I voted not understanding. I thought I heard another word and it was not in it. So at two o'clock in the morning, I realized it, it's three o'clock, I was in tears trying to do whatever I could to recover from that. So even though it looks like we have a mandate that was five to four, one of them was invalid, although I guess officially it was invalid, but it was, it was, one of those was my vote, and it would have been four or five. I made a mistake, I recovered as much as I could, I contacted as many people as I could. So even though it looks like we had something in place that was five to four, that wasn't reality.
Okay, and that's why I'm saying that I would support an amendment to the health and safety plan that mandate universal masking when Erie County infection rate is in nanor high, as determined by the C C tracker. I think that.
I would change that to moderate.
I would support moderate.
The information, the information is a weekly level.
So regardless of what infection rate is.
Nothing's like daily, again, daily. It's a weekly high, so, so we could have more cases than what's actually reported. If, if we want to be the school these days open and the kids to be here one hundred percent of this three years, we've got to take these steps to really protect these students. And I, I, I would wind up making a motion, not yet, but I would wind up making a motion to make it moderate or higher.
Can I ask? I'm sorry, were you done on?
Well, I'm just saying, the reason is because we have the experts telling us to do that. And if we ignore what is telling us, why have them here? Why ask for their opinion? We're asking their opinion because of the experts, that's what y'all need to do. We should do that.
Thank you. So I appreciate, Eric, what you said about, you know, the number one goal, I think, should be to keep kids at school, because that's what we want. Can I ask, can we do this by quarter? Do we like have a motion that expires the end of the first quarter and then look at it again before the first quarter starts? I mean, we put a time limit on the, I mean, I don't understand, we're voting on something, how long it goes for? Is it for the entire school year?
Till we change it.
Till we change it. So we can, and I want to avoid trying to talk about this every meeting, if possible. And I know we're at a problem, or we're an issue where we all don't agree, which is fine, that's why it shouldn't. But, um, it would be nice to get to something that we can stick with for a little while, so it's not a topic we talk about at every meeting.
There's a strong likelihood, Jim, that our, our policy isn't going to come into play this calendar year. There's a strong likelihood, but we should have a policy nonetheless, something to cover.
And if those numbers are high, with a hundred case, this also a hundred cases in general, why would that be different? Why would we want to change your policy? We might not, we might just vote to reaffirm it.
Yeah, we might, but I just think that things are so rapidly changing. I, I, I just don't think that we, I don't want to, I mean, if we need to talk about this every two weeks or every week, that's fine, and we will. But it would be nice to have some consistency too for communication. You know, it's hard, you know, it's hard for us, it's hard, once we decide what we're doing, parents then have to like pivot, and so that's hard. It would be nice, even if that's the case, and I don't want to like, um, try to guess what's going to happen or guess what somebody else is going to do. Guess what the county executive or the governor is not going to do or do, I don't want to guess that stuff. I just want to try to control, we can control the build strength on the inside, we can try to handle whatever happens in the outset.
Jim, our board controls its health and safety plan, so if in, if in the plan, you want to say this plan is valid until the end of the first marking period, we can certainly add that to the plan.
It was just a question.
I think it's a realistic approach, to put an expiration date on it, and then we revisit it. First marking period is around Halloween. Rachel?
Yes, November fourth. November before the end of that year.
We can talk about it then, because, you know, you're right, I mean, it's not something we need to rehash every meeting. Okay, we'll entertain a motion then, uh, when we get to that point in the agenda. Ready to move on? Instructional templates, five twenty point one, this is something the board approved last year. We need to approve it again this year. This is just in case our school district would have to move to remote days. And if we do move to remote days, oh, this didn't fill out, but what, what we'll say is that if we have to move to remote days, they'll count toward our one hundred eighty day count for the school year. Right, that's what the five twenty-one exception, instructional time template is, is, is here to do. So, uh, we'll put the start date, the end date here, and the second question here says, when using remote learning, describe how we'll ensure access for all students. And that's where we'll, we'll mention, like we did last year, that we, all of our students have I P A S, all of our students have internet access, and if they don't have internet access, we'll provide for them to be on a hotspot or use the internet within the school. And, uh, we have to affirm these following things here that Alan and I would have assigned. So all this simply allows is that if we go to remote learning for any reason throughout the course of the year, that those days count toward our one hundred eighty mandatory days. Helen?
And he's already made the agreement that they're asynchronous.
Well, if we're remote, um, it would probably be a combination like, like last year. We don't have to spell that out in here. This just simply has to say, we'll have a, um, we'll have a platform for students if we, if we have to go to the remote now.
And what if a, what if a, what if a school has to close down? Right? My understanding was it was going to be asynchronous this year, or is it going to be synchronous if an entire school closes down?
If a school closes down, I think we're prepared to go, uh, synchronous, remote, like we did last year.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, and that, there's a discrepancy there, though, between if a student this year elects to go remote versus if the school district is forced to go remote. If we're forced to go remote, we'll be a guy like you did last year. If a parent elects to go remote, it may not be a sequence of options.
And even just one village? I just want to make sure I'm clear. And even just one village. I just want to make sure I'm clear.
That's correct. That would be for if we were the entire district. So what this exemption allows us to do is simply to count that as a day. Because our teachers are instructing, our kids are coming to school. It counts as a day. But we're required by law to educate our students on their.
Would you be instructed to cut down, make it a day difference with the association to be announced then?
It's part of the M O U that'll be, yeah, that'll be coming your way. Yep. Uh, folks, item number four is our student tuition grant for 2022. Although we don't accept tuition students, we do have some that are grandfathered under this policy. We also have a provision in our in our policy that allows certain people to pay tuition for a certain period of time. For example, if you're building a house in Fairview, you have 12 months, 800 contract in that house. While you're building that house, you don't have to pay tuition. If you're purchasing a house in Fairview and that house sets to close, let's say in in December, but you're living in Dope Creek right now, you can pay tuition by policy until your house in Fairview closes. We probably have about a half a dozen people that fall under this category right now in the district who either are grandfathered as tuition students or are paying tuition because they're planning on their. By policy, they can do that. So with that said, we need a tuition rate. We're recommending that we keep it the same as last year. Maybe that we have to be already paid. And that rate is $10,000. We base that off of uh, local private school tuition rates. And $10,000 last year seems like a reasonable number in this. That's the recommendation from David. It's $10,000. Yep. Regardless of grade level. In most cases, Jim, the folks that we have grandfathered right now are juniors in the high school. So.
Probably elementary siblings that were.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, they were. They were. They got in under the before we did away with tuition. So they're they're juniors in high school. I think they're three, right? Three tuition students at the high school. And then we probably have two or three others who are going to pay a quarter or actually they're going to pay a quarter front by policy of tuition because they're planning on. We already actually have. It's not, Eric. If we, the board historically has based that tuition rate and actually include this part of my presentation, but the board historically has based that tuition rate on the April 1st versus April 1st tuition rates. Yep. So that would be the recommendation that's 2125 tuition rate of $10,000. Uh, our cyber services agreement, you know, all summer we've been working on an option to provide a high-quality cyber service program to our students. We thought we had a program. Turns out it didn't work out because they came overwhelmed and they didn't accept our application. So Justin's been working hard to come up with a charter agreement and he has one with Warren County that they're very excited about.
Eric, shout to some local school districts and ask what they were doing. We found out last Tuesday morning that Agenuity could not support K to five cyber. If you remember, they were going to provide a teacher for K to five students. They didn't have enough teachers to do that. So we are comfortable with Agenuity in six to 12 where people know it. We can develop courses, it works on our iPads. So we were scrambling to find an elementary program. But it really took one call to a local district and then an email chain. And we connected with Warren County. Warren County has been running their own cyber program for just under 10 years. Quit a few years back. They like, well, you probably don't know all that, but they they referred like 100 teachers. And part of that was because of all their students in cyber. So they decided to kind of consolidate their forces and create a cyber program and bring those kids back to their district. Since then, they've been marketing it to other districts. That's where we fall into this. They have a whole department of cyber teachers. They all sign up to do cyber. They're willing to do cyber. They're trained to do cyber. So we would like to buy into that. It's 29, it's $2,950 per seat for the year. If we would lose that student to cyber, it is upwards of $10,000 for a student. So it is a bargain for us. It's actually cheaper than Agenuity was going to be. The contract is for K-12. So if we want to grow into a K-12 model, we can, but our intent is K-5. It is all asynchronous coursework. But every day there is a ELA in math live lesson available. It goes along with the curriculum. If I want to opt into that live lesson, I can opt into that. If we want to make that part of our attendance policy, we can do that. But if a student just wants to work asynchronously, that's possible also. We did, we would not have got that live lesson from Agenuity. So that's an upgrade and the price is better. An elementary student would get ELA in math, like I said, with a live lesson. They would get social studies and science asynchronously, but could get teacher check-ins for those subjects. They would get quiz ed, health, music, art, and typing in some grade levels. So they would have a specials curriculum as well. So we're excited about that. That is our recommendation. And hopefully at next meeting, I could show you kind of the marketing materials they put out. It would be really nice. Just so you know, you know, they would, my student with cyber, they would log in. It would say Fairview Cyber Academy. They would go into their coursework. Nothing about it says, you know, has another school district's name on it. Our name is all over it. So it is a really nice experience.
There are multiple Erie County school districts.
We're above Harbor Creek here, Lloyd Northwestern. They've really got the market in Erie County. My only mistake was I didn't commit to it earlier. So we had this good model. Ben and I sat in on the meeting. It took about five seconds to realize this was a model we should go with. So they've been really responsive to us. So I don't know, George, I need to speak on the contract, but you've seen it.
All approved.
We're above Northwestern. They all had different models last year.
Justin, how many students do we have currently signed up for cyber?
Um, well, I hate to even say that number. I think after today's decision that could change, but there's about 14.
We need some kind of waiting. We certainly expect more to sign up based on the county executive's mandate today.
Yeah, I think some of the that are on the list are going to come back if some of us are mandated. So. Yeah, I I think I think.
That's true. There were many on each side. There were many on each side.
I'd be surprised if we have more than 10 seats in the Warren County K to five program.
Develop our own based on this eventually? Or do we?
Possibly.
Buy into it?
So in six to 12, we have I don't know, 10 to 15 courses that our teachers have created. So especially like say sixth grade. If there's a sixth grade cyber student, they could take ELA, science, and social studies civics with our school of the course. So we're going to see how that goes in the evaluation. There's some high school courses that kids can take. There's some other school of the courses in middle school, a lot of specials for the middle school for school of the that our teachers can help facilitate, but they won't have a lot of instruction. There was an intent at the start of last school year to create a whole lot of school of the courses and run those. I think we're in a good situation where we have some and we'll run those and we'll evaluate that. We'll continue Agenuity and the Warren County option. I hate to recreate something when they have a whole department dedicated to it.
The only thing I would say is that they don't offer, if they can't, will fill IP. Yes. Right. We still have to follow that in.
Yep. They can provide accommodations in the coursework. Uh, yeah, they can.
Who are the instructors for those courses? The Warren County teachers?
Yep.
And are they, are they going to go? But these teachers go great places to hire.
Absolutely. Right. Yeah, that's part of the trust process. I mean, they're certified. Part I like about it is, you know, they all bid on those jobs. So they all want to be cyber teachers and they have extensive training. We forced our teachers to be cyber teachers last year and tried to train them as best we could. So I think they're ahead of the curve on that piece.
Okay. We're going to give that information out to parents after this evening so they can start to sign up for that as well. We have one purchase. Now, this is actually on for next meeting. Do you consider this is for, this is some audio equipment for a student in need of security systems equipment. It is from Phone Act. It's an FM system, right?
Yeah, it connects to their hearing aids and it works like an FM system.
That'll be on for next time. At our last meeting, we have, you may have seen this on the agenda for the last meeting and then realizing that we were in for a long night to talk about health and safety plan, we scratched admin priorities so that we could have a little bit more time to discuss them tonight and file health instructions from the last meeting. So this is what I mentioned to the board that our administrative team worked on. You can find these in your board material tonight as well. But these are the success standards and there are five that our board worked on. I talked to a lot of board members individually about these when we, when we met for lunch. The main, one being academic athletics and the arts, which is our curriculum and student. Personnel management and staffing is another priority for the district. Technology is a priority. Budget, operations, and safety are all in together. And then we added this one kind of based on some board discussions, which was a priority of communication and community relation. Also, we're back up to the top here just quickly. What we do with these is we've had over two days of administrative team. We developed these these district priorities and then from these priorities, this is what all of our administrators will develop their goal. Some of them are individual goals and goals for their building. I put in goal here, the ones that we're going to really focus on instead of building level. And that is under curriculum, better meeting the needs of our students. See how we broke that down, mental health and inclusionary practices, academic screening services, having some intervention strategies in place. That's a goal that all of our building office principals will be working on when it comes to curriculum and students. You can see some of the other goals there that are more from from the central office level. District exploring some some programs such as a preschool program that's been a long-term goal of ours. Of course, we lost our Y M C A program because of spacing issues. So we're going to start talking about how we can have that community asset back in in Erie County in the future. Enhancing our district offerings, continuing to promote athletics and arts in a consistent way. Doing more to promote our performing arts programs as well as youth arts. So as a as a as a team, we've developed these these priorities and like I said, the principals and the administrators will be creating goals from those. Under staffing.
Can I stop you about that? I mean, I had the cyber thing.
Yep.
But but you're in a great sense maybe not, that's a challenge.
Well, we, you know, just.
I mean, there's a reason to build our own if there's a really great one out there for the priority.
I I would say this, Jim, as a program doesn't necessarily mean that all the courses are going to be schools. I like the approach to Justin's and his team are taking this with this kind of a hybrid approach because, you know, if you're a sixth, seventh, eighth or high school student and you choose to go cyber, we may enroll you in the Agenuity course. You may also be taking several of the fair view courses. We weren't able, we probably had higher aspirations when we asked teachers to create courses. And whether a teacher bought into the idea of creating a course, there was a lot of work. Even though we're paying them to do it, it was a lot of work and the hourly rate of cost of work. So we're going to have a Fairview cyber program. It just might not all be. Is that fair, Doug?
It's fair. It may end up being, you know, vendor courses with specific facilitators in each building. Now, right now, we kind of have refocused and AmeriCorps. We're going to have some of our teachers to do that. I think they want to centralize that. Probably do want to hone in on a product. And if our course development goes well, then yeah, that's a route. So there's a lot of room for growth. Let's just say that.
One of the big priorities is is better meeting the needs of all of our staff as well as our students. And you can see they're improving morale, showing appreciation. We do that every year. Kelly will like this because we're not only looking at the physical and mental health of our students, but also the physical and mental health of our staff. I know a lot of them were impacted last year with some of the challenges we had with COVID related. Again, there's professional growth opportunities for both our professional and our support staff. Recruiting and attracting the best employees has been a long time priority and goal of the district. We love the idea of developing a pipeline for future positions. We've done that administratively. If you look around the table, obviously, there's been a pipeline for administrative position. But we're also talking more about developing developing the pipeline for future coaches and teachers in the district. And you really don't have to look much further than Alan's child and my child this summer taking taking part of the AmeriCorps program. Now, I know that Alan's daughter, just as an example, went into that program this year not planning on pursuing education or anything. And having that exposure to students and working with children just now actually changed her mind and wants to maybe move into education. So we're we're talking a lot about not only looking administratively at our future teachers becoming administrators, but also looking at our students who want to be teachers. And how can we support that as a school district? Ben has a lot of high school kids come down and serve as a teacher, teacher support agent. And we're just looking at all the avenues. We always need good coaches and we always need good teachers. And we have a lot of them here. So we're talking about ways.
Eric, you have a quick question on that. Like you had talked about recruiting and attracting the best employees. Most times I've ever been involved in district leaders, I've often had something about retaining. And that's less of a factor here because of, you know, contracts and things like that? Or is that something that should be explicitly pointed out about retention?
You're probably right. We should probably have the word retention. We're really fortunate, yeah, that we don't lose a lot of teachers to other schools. When we lose teachers typically because someone like Sarah Palm decides to move after we hired her as a family consumer science teacher at Fairview Middle School. And then, you know, they relocated. But we actually remember last time we lost a teacher. So whenever a district has a teacher, they go to be administrative or they're allowed to move out of state. Yeah. But it is important to retain the folks that we have. Because once we've hired them and we invest in them, we certainly have these days. Typically lose, you know, like with the Mount Lake. Somebody like Christina Hostel will be lost to administrative position.
I mean, it may not be as much of a factor.
Most of our teachers tend to stick around. Our contract here is probably one of the better ones long-term as a teacher. They see, they, they, when you look at the the final step in our contract, and David can say about the contract, our final step is a little more attractive than the most prevalent here in county. Some of the steps between are attractive, that final goal. Looking at technology, this is really Brian's area, just implementing vehicles, hardware and software that will drive instruction. We're talking a lot about, and Brian's really main focus this year is talking a lot about training and safety and security measures for students and that. And, you know, we're already into that with getting emails recently today on two-factor identification and changing the passwords and that sort of thing. Brian is bringing in some some extra support to really get on on that focus. Sharing information with parents on the use of our our programs that they use is also important. Making sure that programs talk to one another, communicate with one another is really important for us as well. And, you know, just with some recent things, Brian's asking a lot more questions now maybe than than he ever did before about programs and anything that we implement has to go through his office, which in some cases before that, he was bypassed. And that's not going to happen. which in some cases before that, he was bypassed, and that's not gonna happen. Uh, David's area in budget, which ends up being all of our areas of course, is, is, uh, continuing with our projections. Uh, making those fine balance commitments that are, uh, offset the, that we have coming up. This, this, this is where you have the amazing idea that they go.
Which amazing idea?
Oh, Ben, there's so many amazing ideas. Say it, Ben.
Uh-huh.
You remember what?
No, I don't.
Oh, I was, I was not letting construction impact instruction. Remember that? That was your mic drop moment that our goal set. Uh, so focusing on our instruction even during the question period here. Um, one of the things that we, that we really wanna do, and this is something John and I are working on together, is implementing these facility enhancements. One of the things that Debbie, our officer, and John really came out of that state police meeting was how poorly our, our district signage is, is played. And we know that we need to upgrade there, and it takes more than just somebody making the sign. It's more of the signs behind the, the engineering behind where the signs are, where they're placed throughout the district, maybe even have a key to it. So John's already talking with the sign maker, we have someone lined up to do the signs. We just need to make sure they're in the right places, and that's what I think, and that we're consistent. We're updating the lighting, cameras, um, they were here even today, adding our security. And you can see.
Yeah, that's good.
Uh, that, um.
Okay.
Um, educating all of our stakeholders, stakeholders regarding construction and safety measures, including our students and our staff. Uh, those areas are obviously, uh, marked, but we need to educate those folks who are in the buildings while, uh, while construction is going on. There are some areas that are a little less safe than others, and we need to build that area. Oh, there it is, Ben, right there. Minimize the impact of instruction on instruction. That was your mic drop moment. Um, and we all know that, uh, we, we use Officer Raz in the classrooms, uh, fairly frequently, but we need to utilize his expertise even more, not only in some of the social studies classrooms, but also the health classrooms, he can get in and talk to those kids and be a friendly face and make them understand that, uh, safety and security officers are, are there to help them and they're their friends. Brian does an excellent job with that. I think those are his favorite days when he gets into the classroom. But he also has a great appreciation of the teachers on those days, that he tells me how tired he is after he teaches, uh, day with his mother here. Okay, uh, last one. Uh, last one is communications, and again, just streamlining these efforts to be more consistent between the buildings. You probably noticed that, maybe you haven't, but you have, at Bon Stology. There's more consistency on Stology this summer. You don't see the big posts in some, in some buildings and the little posts in other buildings. We streamline that, so we have a template to follow on all of our Stology posts. Something that was pointed out to me this summer by a board member that I didn't realize, 'cause I never go on Stology on my phone. I always use my laptop for Stology. But it's a whole different look on your phone, and I never even realized that. So when we put a PDF on Stology, there's a big blank space on your phone, and you have to scroll down. Never knew that. Uh, we learned that this summer, and we corrected that, so that won't happen anymore. We're embedding PDFs now, so you actually have to click on them to open it up, so you won't have those big gaps in your, in your screen. And, uh, uh, we're looking at some other things for, uh, for the future, such as a common district-wide handbook. We have the board first three district handbooks. We found a couple districts, one handbook for the district, which is pretty, pretty nifty. So that's something that we're, I'm gonna be taking a look at for, for next summer. And just some other avenues for the community to provide feedback. We noticed that, uh, last year especially, that was something that we learned to go with, that we didn't have enough opportunity, um, I think we all agreed that, you know, communication has proven improved last year, but one of the things that, uh, in that realm where it was lacking was, was accepting feedback. And so we're gonna look for more opportunities to allow community members to give us feedback on, on different topics. And lastly, uh, we do wanna have more community events, uh, in the district where people can attend on important issues such as mental health, such as safety and security. And so when those issues come up, and we can spell something either at the board or as a ministry, we can give opportunities, um, and have our voices heard, and hear what we're doing. So those are our priorities, and, uh, from those, as I said, the administration will be developing goals, and, uh, these will be on for your approval.
They fixed the letter on the high school.
The log on the side of the building?
Yeah, this is a letter. We have.
We got it. He was fixed once, and then it's a different letter.
A different letter, yeah, I think it's the third or fourth time, it was whatever year.
Yeah.
It's really high up there, and our lift doesn't reach them. You have to grab our lift in the grass, so I've hired someone to cover it. But now maybe one of the nice contractors will help me with it. It's not that I didn't notice it, believe me.
So, uh, I, I have a feeling we're gonna have further discussion on the motions, or amendment motions for health and safety plan. Uh, we have PDF on it, we'll, we'll, over two hours, so we'll take a, a break. Let's take a five-minute break, and just be back in five minutes. Yeah, it's, it wasn't too long, that's, that's all, but. Take a five-minute break. Yep, last thing in the personnel matters, we have a couple of mentors for our new teachers to approve this evening. Uh, a couple more of the aforementioned cyber course creators, this is Mr. Beachley. I've created some wellness courses for the cyber friender, one called ECA. All of our bus drivers are on for approval this evening. And if you've seen kind of the local news, or not, sorry, national news, there's a significant shortage on bus drivers across the country right now. I noticed one district in Delaware is actually paying parents to drive their students to school this year. Uh, other districts are offering signs on the seventh and tenth. We're fortunate, we have a full slate of drivers right now. Hopefully that saves the same. A lot of these folks you see have been driving with the district for a really long time, and they're, they're back again, so we're very fortunate there. A couple of MLAs, you'll see there's some, uh, some, uh, support staff, tires. Um, we talked in committee a couple of months ago about, uh, the elementary recess aids, and our strategy was to find, we had this really simple strategy. We're gonna find three AmeriCorps people, they're gonna come in, they're gonna do our recess aids, they're gonna do up the court, and we've, uh, come up with zero AmeriCorps people to this point. So, uh, we, we had a recess aid, um, for that job for a couple of months ago. So Dr. Moore was able to secure those folks, but, um, still having no luck finding AmeriCorps volunteers in the district. We do have those, uh, those two there at the high school. Uh, Autumn was here last year, Jessica will be twenty in the high school. Sarah will be repurposed for that, and we have twelve. Uh, one resignation there, and it wells in, maybe long-term stuff. And that's a question. Okay. Thank you, Dr. T. J. And thank you all for the discussion during the, the, um, on, hey, that was a so, on safety. We will reach that, uh, but let's go through the, uh, review of consent agenda items for our coordinating. Under business operations, we have consent agenda items, equipment at support meetings, and bills payable, but we want either of those separated. Okay. Okay, Treasury report will stand alone. And we have under any of the whole, seven agenda items. We have ECTS renovation and additions project resolution, 2021, 2022 student tuition rate. And 2021, 2022 emergency instructional time. We want those separated. Here we go. The updated 2021, 22 health and safety plan will stand alone. Under education policy, seven agenda items for the second reading policies, first reading policies. Can the university MOU, and those, anyone want, any of those three separated? Under employee relations, ECA operations, seven agenda items, which is one, purchase over 2,000. Under budget finance, Google Workspace backup and sell parcel exoneration taxes, anyone want those separated? Here we go. And that personnel matters will stand alone. So, we will follow the public board meetings order with a pledge of allegiance. My pledge of allegiance.
United States of America, to the Republic, which stands one nation, and God, indivisible, with equal justice for all.
Consent agenda items under business operations. I move forward approval of following consent agenda items for business operations, minutes of board meetings, and bills payable.
Okay.
Thank you, roll call vote.
All right, yes.
Yes.
Cardy, yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Charlie. Yes. Yes.
Yes. Treasury report.
The Treasury report for the period ended July 1st, 2021, general fund current year-to-date revenues at $2,946,466. Our current year-to-date expenditures for the general fund, $2,504,92. General fund cash on hand investments total $15,552,520. Total current investments for all funds total $609,925,44. Capital project fund balance as of July 31st, $5,972,200. Twenty twenty-one buy construction proceeds, $47,507,522. District retirement benefit account, $753,355. Cafeteria fund current year-to-date revenues of $1,366. Current year-to-date expenditures, $10,975, with a cash balance of $146,564. And the Easter and activity accounts for the middle school, $2,317. And the high school, $42,659,000.
I move forward approval of the Treasury report for July 2021 academic, as well as capital project, contract support, and cafeteria report. District attorney, those who have the maximum school activity account.
Roll call vote.
Chris Carr.
Yes.
Three, yes.
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 Yes. Yes. Ryan.
Yes. Correspondence, any correspondence, of course, received by email or due, may I hear your conclusion in there, correspondence. Lost our visitors, kind of our security officer. Hello, Brian. We want to recognize Brian, thank you for being super, so to speak, for your speaking this evening. Free reports, therapy board, school directors, members of committee of the whole, on August 9th, 2021, 6:31 PM at therapy middle school. Board members present, Mr. Brian, Mr. Carr, Mr. Hayes, Mr. Murray, Mr. Lloyd, Mr. McDonald, Mrs. Hill, Mrs. Selbert. Also attend, we're turning deals with Dr. K, Mr. Meyer, Dr. Zobin, Mr. Bell, Mr. Paul, Mr. Barry, Mr. Mary, and Dr. Moore, Dr. Hayes, and Dr. Kent. Committee of the whole, consent agenda items. I move forward approval of following consent agenda items for the committee of the whole. ECTS renovation and additions project resolution, 2021, 22 student tuition rate. And 2021 emergency instructional time. Thank you. Thank you, roll call vote.
Cardy.
Yes.
Cardy, yes. Ryan.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes. Brian, yes. Carr, yes.
Yes. Updated 2021, 22 health and safety plan, are there any motions to update the 2021, 22, 22 health and safety plan? Grand Joe. Any motion?
Make a motion to change the public safety plan to mirror the implementation by kind of executives today. So, it would be mandatory masking for anything above low for all school personnel. Following CDC guidelines or numbers only.
You have a motion, do you read back the motion? Okay.
Yes. Um, updating the health and safety plan to read administrative for collecting for anyone who works below some of these guidelines and numbers.
Anyone get a motion? Okay.
So, above low would mean high substantial and moderate.
Can I take a back?
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? Jordan, we got some discussion, we just go vote. No, you go. Any discussion?
This is not a minute, or is this first quarter?
And so per the motion, it would be until it's changed to get. I didn't, I didn't see if a termination clause, I didn't hear one, and I would agree. No sunset. With the movement, consider it a friendly amendment. To make it to substantial and high. You're asking in the substantial and high infection rate per CDC report, very calculated.
You're asking me directly?
Yes, if you accept that as a friendly amendment.
Um, no. I'll be answering questions.
Ready to second? Any motion, any ready to second? I don't want to cut anybody off. Okay, motion and second, roll call vote.
All right. Yes. Mr. Ryan.
Yes.
Charlie.
No.
Yes. Ryan, yes. Carr, no. Kate.
Yes. No. Motion carries five and four. Very good. We have a bill for five, hopefully in a county five. Is that one? You have five guesses, okay, I'm just. Okay, I'm sick. All right. That's fair.
Um, will we? If it's CDC numbers, we don't have to get our numbers from the CDC, get our numbers from.
It's required that CDC tracker.
Okay, so that's what that means.
Yeah. Yeah, Erie County is using the CDC tracker exclusively now, and that's updated on. And that's part of, I think, per CDC reporting.
And it's that website we've seen before where you just go on and pick your state, pick your county.
It is. Okay, education policy, this is Brian.
I move forward approval of the following consent agenda items for the education policy committee as presented. Second reading of policy, whiskey and coffee, and DNA university on the list.
Thank you, roll call vote.
Ryan.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Brian, yes. Yes.
Good.
Yes.
Thank you. Yes, sorry. Thank you, Mrs. Brian. Employee relations, ECA operations, this is New, seven agenda items.
Thank you, Paul, I move forward.
Twenty-one, actually, sorry.
I move forward approval to repair before equipment through by gallon at an estimated cost of $3,000 to $6,000, depending on the amount of equipment as presented.
Thank you, roll call vote.
Charlie. Yes. Yes. Ryan, yes. Miss Carr, yeah.
Yes.
Cardy, yes. Ryan.
Yes. Yes, thank you, Mrs. New. I think finance, Mrs. Selbert.
I move forward approval of the following consent agenda items for the budgeting committee as presented. Google Workspace backup, sales personnel exonerations of taxes.
Thank you, roll call vote.
Yes, someone, yes. Ryan, yes. Miss Carr, yes. Ryan. Cardy, yes. Ryan.
Yes.
Charlie.
Yes. Yes. Thank you, Mrs. Selbert. Personnel matters, as reported, couple of personnel matters as recommended and were read by the superintendent. And as identified in the personnel list, you approved, and with stipulation of positions you fill, only the program or activity is to be conducted as determined by board after. Thank you, roll call vote.
Yes. Ryan, yes. Miss Carr, yes. Ryan.
Yes.
Cardy, yes. Mr. Ryan.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Thank you for your motions and votes. I do five days, Mrs. Kennedy report.
Um, we will leave on Wednesday, but I'm assuming I can discuss some of those charts a little bit. So, if anybody has a specific question or is concerned they'd like me to bring up, I'd be happy to do that, just like.
Thank you. I have a cover report for legislation. Tech school, Mr. Lloyd, congratulations on the resolution voted tonight. Any feedback on the other districts, are they all voting in favor? Uh, they're all voting this month, and we, this paper, I'm going to vote in favor, with the exception of no flunked question mark. It's just a question mark. I don't think they voted, yes. Not of the, not of the hard line, no. I know their superintendent was supporting them, but.
Um, school starts on the 31st, I think it's already started this year, so.
Thank you. Appreciate all your work on that. Assistant report, Attorney Joseph. Other than the COVID troubles I can work on every day in my federal mind training for. Uh, right. Thank you. Counsel. Secretary of Health and Sports goes in. We've heard a lot from the board tonight, anyone want to make any closing remarks?
Just looking forward to the start of the school year. I know my kids are very excited to study my elementary ones, they take you back here every day. I mean, they feel cool, sorry, I can't wait, I'm so excited.
Wow, that'll change. Um, gotta be the principal. Thank you, Graham. Who else?
I want to thank everybody for the questions on the asking issues. Clarity of the question, that's sort of, there's still an expert telling us, but thank you all, there's a lot of, a lot of questions.
And I feel that even though I didn't know, it's happened, but I don't think that I would be like that. And I do trust our professional, I think that, and I agree with you, I'll take that off, I'm going to get like. You guys, whatever, that's really, for our children, right now.
I would just say that I appreciate everybody's partnership and communication and respect for one another. I think that's a common theme that we're trying to make sure that we harbor here, so I appreciate us doing that as a whole. And I think it's great that we can have debates, but we walk away knowing that we're working for the same goal. You know, and, you know, we're talking about masks right now, we're not talking about kids being in school every day, and that's great. And I think things are going to change, you know, no doubt, but we're going to continue to work together for the kids. So, I thank you for your partnership.
Just thought I would update the health and safety plan, I'll forward that on to the state. We have a standing URL that's on file with the states that they can locate our health and safety plan. Anytime, we'll get that updated tomorrow. The other thing is, I haven't really been taking full attention of, of using the expertise of our school nurses, particularly Mrs. Thomas. This is really her wheel balance, she has, she's finishing up her match with the Korean Public Health right now as well, in addition to being in RN. I am going to take her up on her offer to restructure those graphics a little bit. Because even though we didn't design those, those came through from the Department of Health, they're pretty confusing. I needed her to really interpret them for me last week and begin today, and really walk me through what I had understanding. Show restructure of those to make them a little bit more organized and more understandable, then we'll publish those on our website. They won't have the endorsement of the Erie County Department of Health if we create them, but I think it will be, like Jim said, a little more user-friendly for the end user. And lastly, just one thing, we're still waiting for the, the actual job description and the finalization of this. But it was confirmed with us last week that every district who wants one, the Erie County, is going to get the funding from the Department of Health for a time pandemic coordinator. Which is, these are to our ears, and we really can't wait for that, because, you know, as Mr. Ryan suggested, if we do something more long, long-term in communication and public relations. Having the pandemic coordinators can actually allow only not more time to focus on, on that aspect of things. So, I think that's kind of what we need in both of those areas, communication and pandemic. So, I'm looking forward to that, getting the job description and working with George on, on how we hire that individual, because that's not been completely clear for the Department of Health yet. They need to be this employee, they're still struggling on how that works. They are giving each district $42,000 a year, and that's committed for at least the next two years. So, just by remarks, I also wanted to congratulate the board on its celebrations tonight, and thank you all for your positive and constructive discussions. Oh, I want to congratulate Fran on her advocacy for her motion, and Kelly for that motion. I did vote against the motion mainly because I thought the trigger should be higher, because I did, but I did share my thoughts last meeting about the split of moderate being changed from to a different classification. I felt that the red is what we're really going to be concerned about, parents' mitigation strategies. But I applaud the board for a important term to reach consensus, or at least, you know, of one that can be workable. Um, that the, I think, want to congratulate the staff, administrative staff and teachers for getting ready for this year. To basically pivot from where we left off last year, and hopefully prepare for a more normal year of school in the Erie School District. Can't wait for that to happen. Let's just cross our fingers and hold on whatever source of inspiration you draw upon for a safe and healthy school year for our kiddos, our staff, and our, and our teachers, and our, all of us who serve this district. Both in the classroom, on the field, on the auditorium, on the gyms, everywhere, just to be safe, healthy, and do well, and do good things. All right, we're adjourned.